Would we stand in salute flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Excellent. Good evening and welcome to the 2022 Select Board Retreat for Reedfield. This evening, we are have a full agenda and I am excited to be able to turn things over to former Select Board member and chairman Bruce Bourne to help us get through this evening and be as productive as we can. We, other than that, I'm just going to sort of send it right over to you, Bruce, and take it away.
Sure. Everybody has the outline, I assume, or some sort of copy of notes or whatever. I hope you did your homework, because there was a little bit of homework. It wasn't too heavy duty. I just wanted to start with some opening thoughts and see if we needed to adjust anything on the agenda and go over some ground rules. First of all, this agenda is your agenda. You're meeting in a workshop mode. You can alter what I'm doing. You can send me in a different direction. You can take it over if that's what you need to do. But hopefully, the consensus is going to be that I'll try to facilitate the best discussion using the guideline that you've already seen going forward. So my role is to help make sure everybody is listening to everybody as they speak. Another role I'll have is to try to ensure that people participate. So I'll never be picking on you when I say, Sean, Carol, Steve, what do you think, you know, or something like that. It's just really to make sure that there's every perspective possible shared. And it may be as simple as not naming an individual, I might say, because everyone had their piece on this particular item. I'll do some restating, and you will correct me on my restatements if I make a mistake. So if I say, oh, we all agreed to this, and three or four of you say, whoa, whoa, wait a second, then we'll restate the restatement. And I'll try to summarize on the same basis. And part of my goal is to try to keep things moving along. But that doesn't mean if we get into a robust discussion on something, that we're going to kill it so we can get to the next item. It'll mean that maybe we'll just make it a time later. I'll tell you what I'm not doing. I'm not doing team building. That's not my role here tonight. I'm not doing leading. That's not my role here tonight. I won't be contributing. You can ask me for perspectives that's technical, but I won't give you any opinions on your goals and so on and so forth. So it won't be a finding either. Eric's joined us. He's at the table as he is at every Select Board meeting, and he's a full resource for you, and he will be contributing as we go on. And he's really a resource observer. He needs to know what direction you're setting. And he's a participant upon your invitation, and I'm assuming that invitation is open. Okay, great. Are there any upfront concerns about how we're going to do this tonight? Oh, sure. Okay, great. So as far as ground rules go, a lot of facilitators will start everything with us. You know, these are ground rules and so on and so forth. You have really good conversational ground rules, so I don't think I need to go over that. I think the only ground rules, rules I would ask or request that you consider is that everyone gets to speak and understand, of course, that this is a workshop, so we won't be casting any votes. But I will ask occasionally for how many people agree on something, and that's called polling. And you can get to a meeting later and completely change your mind, because it's not a committed vote. It's just polling, so we can see directionally if there's agreement on an item to move forward or whatever. And I will run what I call a parking lot, if you like. The parking lot is a very simple device. I'll just note up in the corner things that we say. We don't want to deal with that right now. That's kind of off, off the farm or whatever you want to call it, but it's not what we're here to do tonight, or it's bigger than what we want to do tonight. And in that case, it will go on the parking lot. You can decide how you want to deal with that later. I think at the end of all of this, I noted that I'll give you a report. I'm going to take sparse notes, because I've been assured that the owl will capture everything everybody says, and I'll be able to construct my notes from that. If not, I'll be calling you all up. Is that true on the owl?
This meeting is being recorded.
Okay, this meeting is being recorded. Is it being broadcast as well?
Only to those who could be participating.
Okay, so great. So we did want to start off with inviting any members of the public to share an input that they might have. I'm assuming they can stand in their place, and the owl will pick them up. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Or come onto the podium and just say who you are. And you're invited to say what you hope to see. And you're also invited to give whatever guidance or recommended specifics you'd like to say as well to this board as a endeavor to set their goals for the coming year. So the invitation is open. Is there anybody who'd like to do that? Please come right up.
Can I just ask, is someone going to take notes on the big ideas?
I'm going to take notes as we go along on ideas and goals, so that will be on the chart.
I just speak from the public that's speaking, so we don't forget what they've said.
I can do that.
Thank you.
Come right up. Everyone line up.
Hannah Leary, head of the Reedfield Department. We had sent a letter to the Select Board hoping that you would... Retreat. Our June vote was voted down for taxpayer aid for our total of fairgrounds. And the development itself is still needed. We're hoping that there can be some discussion about grants to apply for. A portion or parts or stages of the development more in order where it can happen. And just a side note to add a little fuel to the fire. I found out last week that while many in town think the school is wide open for the community to use, they built some really nice new bathrooms there behind the concession stand down by the track. And those are only open for school-sponsored activities, so the community is not allowed to use everything at school. So I just kind of want that.
Great. So we just call that fields. Everybody understands what that means?
Sure.
Should I work here?
She said what, field and grants and...
Right. Yeah, I'm not trying to capture every essence of it, but when we come back to that topic, we'll just start right there. Does that make sense?
What do you want us to remember?
Fields and finance. How's that sound?
Yep.
Field. I like that variation.
I like that. Anybody else? Anybody following us online?
We don't have anybody online, but I did have residents stop by our office this afternoon.
Sure.
And the board members also all received a letter from Greg Gregory. So this is one of those two things.
Sure.
I think Greg's letter also relates to the fairgrounds, but it's advising caution and an approach that looks again at all of the potential options that might be out there. Unless it's a gross summary, but that's how I would characterize it. The comment I had this afternoon was from Ralph Eno. He wanted the town to look at a three-year review and assessment, determine whether or not in-house winter maintenance plowing was a better option than working with a contractor at the current cost or future cost of $400,000 plus per year. He wanted us to look at 10-year horizon and make a determination of which we think is better operationally, financially, and just do a full cost assessment on that, on that item. So I'd say Ralph would be winter maintenance.
Just plowing. How's that work for you? So in-house plowing, not going to get into the 10-year horizon.
Yeah.
You say three years or 10 years? Did you say?
He wanted us to look over the next three years at what it would be, what we might be doing at the end of that period, but looking at a horizon for service of 10 years and capacity with the cost of course.
And that's because our current contract is for three years.
Yes.
So we're not changing anything in that time frame unless that contractor works back out.
Yeah. So that was all I've had from residents for comment. The letter from Greg and the notes from Ralph.
Great. So I appreciate Ralph's notes. They're pretty specific. And what I'll say is, as we set goals tonight and talk a little bit about those goals, we're making casing for the sausage. We're not making the sausage.
Yeah.
So that's a little bit different, but we should talk about big picture items in terms of maybe timeline a little bit.
Right.
But we're not going to get as specific as his recommendation is. Now, the goal could be to fully implement Ralph's vision, you know. That could be a goal. We'll see how that goes. So we're going to start off with a quick communication exercise on listening. And I'm always a little adverse to doing these exercises, because some of them are pretty dorky. Some of them we've done in building groups and so on and so forth. But I try to, I use a resource that I think does pretty quick and informative, informative exercises. And so we're going to do one called the Listening Dilemma. And before I get to that, I just want to say that permission's granted for me to do this by HRD Press in Anheuser-Schmerz Massachusetts, and it's an article by Peter Garber. He makes this, he has 50 or 60 exercises that are pretty good. So what we're going to do first is ask for a volunteer who likes to just read. Okay, Sean, I saw your hand first. It's like an auction, you know?
Yeah, that's it.
So you've never seen a meeting before, Sean. Your goal is to read it as fast as you can.
Out louder.
Out loud. Read it as fast as you can.
Whole page?
The whole page. Not a big page, is it?
What?
It's not a big page, is it? Okay, read the whole thing.
And I was saying, listening, we speak at a rate of 150 words per minute, but we can hear it at a rate of 1,000. This gives us a lot of extra time. What could we do with this time?
What did he say?
WPM time.
Okay, we listen at 150, but we speak at 1,000 words per second we speak.
You can see on the way around.
Yeah, yeah.
I thought it was 1,000 words per second.
Yeah. Speed of sound.
Probably with per minute, not per second.
Second.
Go ahead and give the question, the numbers slowly this time.
So we speak at a rate of about 150 words per minute, but we can hear at a rate of about 1,000 words per minute.
Yeah.
That gives us a lot of extra time. So what do we do with this time?
And that's what we're going to talk about a little bit. The goal here is to give us some introspection as we go through the evening on listening. And also, it might be useful in the future for the board. So thank you for reading that. We're going to go ahead and do the exercise. The exercise is very simple.
That wasn't it?
No, that's not the exercise. That's the, that's the, that's called the guided discovery. So you discover what you don't know, so then you can find out what it is. Okay, we're going to pair up, okay? The audience is very welcome to also participate in this if you would like to. And we're going to do this a couple of times. And we're a little ahead of schedule, which is great. And we'll use that time to at least complete the exercise twice, if not thrice. So we're going to actually be timed. So you'll pick a partner, and one partner is going to describe to the other partner, not rapidly or anything, but just what their hobby or an avocation or something they're enthusiastic about. They're sharing for two minutes straight, and then there'll be two minutes where that person will tell you what they heard. And there's no judgment in this. You don't have to correct them or anything like that. You might have a very brief discussion. So we're going to allow five minutes for that, and then we're going to do five minutes again with a different partner. I would prefer that you pick somebody you don't normally talk to as much. Does the audience want to participate in this? No?
It should be changed.
Okay. Because we got, we got five people on the Select Board, and I have to use Eric to make it six, or I'd be more than happy to use somebody from the audience. Are you a reporter?
I'm not. I actually play from the crowd.
Okay.
I'm just kind of listening.
Okay, great. You could be a getting paid person, too. Okay. Yeah, okay.
When we do this the second time, do you want the person who spoke to not?
No, you're going to switch partners. It's just, it's just really to have a couple of different experiences and perspectives. Okay, so go ahead. Pair up, and I'll just give the go.
Talk to you.
We get to watch this. Okay, are you ready to start? Yeah, go ahead. So you have two minutes. You have two minutes, and I'll call time, okay? Start. Somebody's going to describe, and they want to start with the person or a hobby or a fire. Okay, so we're at the minutes, okay? I'd like you to take an additional minute and ask, and the person who, the person who was the receiver or the listener, kind of repeat back to the delivery person what, what their application or hobby was, which you understood. So about a minute. Well, we'll give you two minutes, because you have two minutes. You might be able to do it for that.
There's some.
So go ahead. Okay, time is up. Time is up. And we'll just very briefly in one minute, give the person who repeated back to you the information that you sent to them or spoke of, how they did. Just one minute. Okay, time's up. Okay, everybody? Time's up. And we're, you don't have to move, because we're going to, we're going to actually switch partners and do another dance. Was this useful?
Oh, yeah.
Is it useful as an exercise? You don't know? Okay, so that's a good reason to do it one more time, perhaps. So now I'm going to talk about a few items that you generally look for in active listening before we go ahead and do the second round of exercise. It's very important to concentrate on what the speaker is saying, listening to their voice reflexions, their body language. There are a lot of things that can influence communication, and paying attention to as many as possible, whether the verbal and nonverbal is very important. Another part of active listening is trying not to worry or think about how you're going to respond. Because if you spend your time figuring out how you're going to respond, okay, you know, I got to say to this guy, da-da-da, you're really not actually giving that person the full attention that they need. And you want to interact nonverbally with the other person, or maybe even a little bit verbally, but you know, I hear you, or nod, or show some sign that you're listening. So you don't want to be completely 100% passive. I guess that's why they call it active listening. And you don't want to interrupt a person, finish your sentences with like, oh, I know exactly how that feels, you know, or whatever. Listening is actually purely spending time listening. And so we're going to do this one more time. So I would ask people to just get a completely different partner, somebody else. And if you delivered a message to a person, okay? Yes, go ahead.
No, no, I'm saying like, I'm a deliverer. I need to go to...
And you want, you want to receive.
Yes.
But it doesn't matter if somebody else on that seat.
If you were a receiver, I will go with you.
Okay, great. And if you are the person who ends up getting the delivery again, for whatever reason in your conversation, you'll be able to see the difference between what a couple of years ago did. Okay, so let's, let's go ahead and switch. We'll do this one more time.
Yeah, I know. Yeah, that's how it is. Yes, would you like to? I deliver. I, it's my turn to listen, so you deliver.
Talk about something you read about, a good book or whatever. So ready? Go ahead.
And then I go up.
He brings it down.
Your name is Everdame.
It should be near the corner.
Just basic. Yeah, great. I'm glad you had a schedule. Sharon's a delivery person. You have a tip? I hate these places that go, it's square, and I like square. Even 25% of the range. Where is?
What?
Or nine. Yeah. Okay, we're going to, we're going to stop now, and your partner gets to stop and stop, partner.
I thought it was an instructive verse.
And so we're going to, we're going to reverse, and the other person will tell you in a couple of minutes what they heard, okay? Okay, if everybody will finish up now. Everybody ready to finish up? Just one minute to reflect back to the person who recapped how they did, okay? Get that?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Just one minute to give him some feedback. Okay, let's all go back to our seats. Okay, let's all go back to our seats.
Can we do one more?
Would you like to do one?
Well, Sandra just came in and she'd probably like to be part of this.
Oh my gosh.
Want to do an active listening? I'm gonna take that as a no.
We just did a little exercise on listening. Let's go around and just hit a high point reflection. Not so much on what you, the topic of what you've heard, although you can share anything you want. But what you thought about the listening itself. Anybody first?
Well, when you, when you making efforts to hear and listen, you pick up so much new stuff. And you, 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 in your mind, you're, you're absorbing it. Sometimes I will try to make sure that I like, watch someone's face as they deliver it, because then I'll know it's important to them, or something like, you know what I mean? Or if there's a joke attached to it. But it's, it's, sometimes you get so in the habit of listening, or pretending to, they don't really do it.
Pretending listening is a hobby of many people, actually. Somebody else?
I am, I would just observe it like the challenge for me. He did the mechanical question, that he remembers all the words. And already, right, oh, we do that, that. He also clearly got the feel of what I'm saying, and why it was important to him, and how he feel doing those things. And that to me is like, probably more important. It shows that he's really interested in talking to you and kind of empathize with you. In the sense of what they're.
Great. Anybody else?
Well, I would just say I love these exercises, because I think it does remind people about how much we do care too. But it's not just, when we talk about the messages we send and how much to be received across that message, and what parts we listen to. And I know that there's so many distractions in life, things on our wrists, and things in our pockets, and things popping up on screens, and can we stay alert to what really involves at the moment? To go back and stop and listen for a second, or two minutes.
Great. Carol, what would you like to add?
I don't know, we weren't talking as really fast, so it was an enjoyable topic, so it was very easy to tune in and stay tuned. I think it's when people are, maybe it was their speech that's off the topic. You know, and, but it was pleasurable.
Okay. Good, good. Catherine, what would you like to kind of wrap up?
It's easier for people to listen to something that's personal than something that's impersonal. So I think it's, it's easier for people to internalize that, something that you can possibly make a connection to, as opposed to the kinds of topics that we consider as a select word. I'm not saying it's more important or less important, I just. And then the other thing is the, which we're doing right now, is the eye contact.
Yeah, I, I actually just realized that as I was glancing ahead to the next topic, to make sure I stayed in the timeline, that I was not actively listening to Catherine. So that's why I immediately got my eyes back up to it.
But the, you know, they say there's certain things when you're reading people's eyes. If they look off to the left, it means certain kinds of things. If they look off to the right, it's another comfortable or uncomfortable kind of thing. Or, you know, if you're looking one way, it's like you're formulating your thoughts. But it's hard to keep looking at somebody continuously, because it becomes much more personal, no matter what the topic is. And it's like, it was fun to see what I did and what the other person did at the same.
Great. Well, and, and, you know, again, the purpose of this exercise is just that we might be able to try to use it as we proceed tonight. You know, you can decide how you wanna practice that and so forth in the future if you do. So our dinner is gonna arrive pretty soon. And it's kind of a working dinner, we'll certainly take a break so everybody can get some pizza. The next part of the meeting is to talk about the last year's goals, and to move forward on that. So you all have the agenda. So we would be starting with a look back. Does everyone have this sheet? I think it was sheet three, in a little packet, can you see? So we can do this a couple of different ways. I can just simply go through what the goals were, and we can give some thoughts on what could have been done better. We might make some notations on any goals that need to be paused, discontinued, or whatever. And if anything's gonna stay in the mix, I'm gonna put it up on the chart for now, okay? And then we'll talk about perhaps major events that might affect some of those, some of those goals.
I'd prefer if you would read them, especially because we have the hour recording it.
Okay, great. So I'm gonna sit down for this part. Which don't allow me to kind of eye contact. I always had special glasses for me, if I don't know if you folks knew that. So this is the goal and status outcome for 2020 and 2021.
That would be 2020, oh yeah, that's.
Twenty-one.
So we wanna be looking at the 21, 22.
Is that one and a half?
Yeah, the, the top where it says below is the goal status outcome for 2020.
Oh, okay.
That was, that was.
And then the next part was this.
That is correct.
So the pizza is here, so this is gonna be a working dinner. It doesn't make sense for me to cover one or two things.
And then go, yeah.
Yeah, so we'll grab some pizza, so let's have a break. Everybody who's in public, please grab a piece of pizza or two as well. So we're in recess for a few minutes.
Thank you. Do I have to gavel? Is that a gavel?
You don't have to gavel.
Okay, I wanted to gavel.
It's the workshop. It's a, it's a working dinner. We're, get some dinner.
Okay, I listened to that, and it still doesn't.
You're all welcome, Brad.
Do you prefer school, like? Is it, have you always had your licenses examined? It's amazing. Oh, you're a leaf, you're a baby, I love it, yes.
Ridiculous question.
Yeah.
What's interesting is that my first started teaching, this is how I. I was twenty-three, and at that time, this is bizarre.
Holy moly.
So the people that are, you don't drive up to ten times without a list. And so I think, I think working, only about two weeks, I think. F my ex started working in engineering, I'm totally clueless. But I was up to any part, and so they had filled out a lot of rich things. Gets people to know the driver's license. The transportation director, John Greeley. Took me up, went around one park lot exactly twice. Backed the bus up once, showed me I don't have the closing doors, turned on the lights. I was racing.
But, that's incredible.
I ran over ten weeks for getting through.
Unfortunately.
That bus was like, long, and I thought.
I don't believe that.
But she never let me get that down.
But you, but you, but you did that when you were, were teaching too, so you had your driver's license, now you need it, right?
Well, now, I had my driver's license, but I have a bus driver. Yes, I had a driving.
Right, so now you have your bus.
Oh, I have to.
Yeah.
They changed that a lot.
Okay, but that's what I'm saying, Steve. The heady days of years ago.
I saw the light, I was like, someone along the lines, that's a bad idea. And it was.
Maybe they should do something better. Oh my gosh.
Sure, I like this one. It will be ready. I like this. It will be ready. It says banned people.
Well.
You want to clearly let your parents walk the distance.
Steve, it's just one of these etched out with that type of spread, handwriting.
That'd be awesome, they just copy that.
Yeah.
That would be great.
I'm in a different font. Oh no.
Dennis and I are different from the three of you.
Yeah.
So what's keeping them?
We're in all caps, we're all, we're in all caps.
We're in shouting out, hey, that's a job.
We're like grandmothers, they can bail.
I think it depends on what Staples has set up for a guy.
I thought of something one day, I think that is not true. And I'm just talking about. Whenever the COVID age to have, we check. It's your request that we fund like one or two books a year, of archiving the very oldest documents that are involved. And like we sent them out to the CDC.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm sure, I think she finished it up. I'll check. A good reminder.
Yeah, because I'm pretty. Because we respond, we have some duty to save those things, right?
Yes, we do.
And I think that digitally archive them as well, it's like copying them down then.
Yeah, we want CD. No. What you wanna also?
Right.
I don't really know, it's a business, but not really. I don't really, it's around four thousand.
Wow, he's not a math guy.
You know, because it's like an eight-year rotation. So, you know, and, and when you play five, the last three years were brutal. You play five or six a year, and then half of it died for the year. So, so drop. You know, the little, the big tree, the leaves, it's not developed. And you gotta just really brush some of the trees. So then these drought, you know, leave out the big deal. Especially the heart. This summer started better than August.
Oh.
You're not up there with the whole supply.
I said it's not a business, but, you know, that would clearly be an economic, to try to curate that many trees. It is what it is.
Are you ready to start?
Sure.
Good, great. So. Excellent. So about a third of the way down that page are the current goals for 21 and 22. And what I'm gonna do is read them one at a time, and we'll have a discussion on them. It's the kind of, I don't wanna actually spend a lot of time on reflections. You know, just if we need to fit something, move it forward, that's great. If you wanna just kind of do a check-in, that, that's done. Or if you wanna do a check-in and says, we really blew that one, or we blew an aspect of it, I would do that, yes?
Do you have a copy of that?
Uh, no, I don't. Uh, I don't. No, I don't have a copy of it. Well, who do you actually?
Is that the site?
Well, that's why we.
I want Eric to make a couple copies.
I have, I do have one copy. And yes, get up and move around and get a piece of pizza or whatever, while we're going through this process. Okay, so we'll get started. Is everybody with me?
Almost.
I stood front, great, okay. So the very first one is to review, revise, and draft governance documents as needed. And it mentions three items, a cannabis policy, an application, a minutes policy, and a remote meeting policy. Are there some comments or thoughts on that?
I don't think we did the cannabis one at all.
Nothing happened with cannabis ordinance. We, it was mostly minutes. Board, I don't know if boards, the boards committees, commissions booklet thing you put together, counts as something that we did in terms of these governance documents, but we did that as well, so. I think we did some of that.
We did the remote meeting policy, maybe twice.
Well, but I guess my comment on that one is it's still seeing some committees. Still like overhaul. That's a little frustrating.
So I'm not sure that falls under the fact that, did we review?
Right.
And revise them, that falls more under, how do we ask committee implement, right?
Any other comments? Steve is probably the least to you, because you didn't set these goals, but listen, you can hop in anytime.
I think we probably ought to carry over the cannabis policy application, because it's pretty confusing for the last person who did it.
No, I think, I think that's especially as, certainly the landscape in that space is changing. It's valuable to keep looking at what we're asking.
We didn't have enough details, I don't think you guys were here. We were, but we didn't have enough details. And it's not that we have to write out a business plan for the person, but we need to specifically state, you need a detailed business plan that contains, you know, these five major areas.
And we don't, we have pending another one coming, maybe?
No, that has been withdrawn.
Oh, they're not moving in down at the depot?
Oh.
I heard that.
Yeah.
Oh, I was talking about the, the building here, there's just.
Right, the same people are going to be.
Okay, so we, we wanna, we wanna continue looking at that.
Yeah, I carry that.
So it's necessary.
So the next one was to continue our commitment to energy efficiency.
I think we did that, we put the splits in. I think we did that.
We did that at the transfer station with both, with all the buildings.
And we put more energy efficient streetlights in.
We did increase the number of those.
Can I answer a question? Is anybody using the car?
Yeah, I think the.
Chip use.
Chip uses it daily. Well, Winnie's here, I think he takes it to me too.
Congrats.
Eric, does Chip take the part of me? And then Wayne is paying half of the expense.
It has certainly raised my awareness, I see them all around town, like either Augusta, for example, and I'll have a beautiful plate, I'm like, oh, we did that appropriate too.
Oh really?
Oh yeah.
Okay, so we're all checking on that, on that one.
Yeah, very good.
Uh, continually multi-year effort to bring high-quality bet broadband service to town.
Oh, we worked on that one, but I don't think it's done. I think we ought to leave it hanging. For opportunity, I mean, we all, we discussed that recently at a meeting, right?
Right, well, and it's, it's, I think it's a different shape of this, I don't think it's the same goal.
Yeah.
Um, I think the goal is to, is a little more specific now, is to expand high-speed broadband internet service access, access.
So let me ask you this, does that rise to an overall goal of the select board? Or is that something you're gonna do as a matter of course, you already have your eye on that ball? And it's, doesn't need to have a, a goal statement to accomplish it.
I almost, I almost would say that. I don't think it needs it, I don't think we need to have it as a goal now. That was, uh, to me, that was a watershed change of what we're trying to do. This, this matrix infill is just a, is, is, I think, a municipal. Responsibility that we have to.
Does, does everybody feel the same on that?
I'm just.
Oh, yeah.
No, it's like, we're gonna pursue, um, spectrum, building out the, having a contract or a new franchise agreement or enforcing the old franchise agreement, so it's. Gonna look at the, the, uh, cable ordinance that the town has. So I, I think we ought to leave it, it, it's certainly not the same goal, it's the same topic.
So to me, what you're saying is a little bit different from what this meant to me last year.
Right, it's the same topic. It's not the same goal.
Yeah, I think, I think. There's holes and there's some contract agreements we have that we need to make wise. But I think it's a little bit different than having a broadband.
Uh, you need to, to have this goal as a municipally, uh, uh, backed utility, that's what I took it, that's what, how I read that part of it.
I think that's what you intended.
Right, and so this, the idea of like doing agreements and, and things, you know, negotiating is sort of a.
Yep.
Like a normal, like course of business for the town, we're gonna do that anyway, we're gonna read. So I, 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 I mean, I don't, it, it doesn't change anything if you wanna continue to have it, have it be open-ended, that's fine, but. Uh, it means something different to me now.
Okay, so I'm gonna cut the discussion on it, we're just gonna put broadband solutions here. Um, you know, you might end up with like fourteen goals here and you need to trim them back and say some of them are gonna be the town business, um. And some of them are gonna be more aspirational goals, let's put it that way. And that's kind of what we're trying to do here, is get to more aspiration goals. And usually, probably four or five is where you wanna end up on, on that. And then you might have a list of other, uh, things you wanna focus on. And that's maybe what we'll do, is create a focus list. Does that work for people?
Sure. Awesome.
Okay, great. Improve downtown traffic safety. The church road sidewalk, the corner parking and post office and the beach across your walk, walk. Feedback, thoughts about that goal from last year?
Hey. Um, above when you have twenty twenty one, investigate church road sidewalk, we have done, I think that was a major carryover and will continue to be a major carryover for quite a long time.
Yeah, I think it's a carryover too, uh, uh, it's just the whole thing improved down.
Done part on twenty twenty one, but we're still.
I don't think anybody said it was done.
Oh, no, that was, no, that was, I'm sorry, I formatted this document, so I can explain to you. I basically, did we, did we do those things? Uh, did we further investigate the church road, yes, we did, so that was fine.
And then it was a carryover because it shows in the list down below.
Yeah, and I think it'll be a care, I would also move that it be a carryover, just again, because we already exposed, uh, exploring the, the planet we just did that and, uh. The changes in front of the post office and stuff like that.
No, I think it's just the sidewalk. Where parking, we have the R P L for that now, right?
Yeah.
The post office. Right, but I mean, that's actively in progress and has been approved, money for it and so on. So I think that one's just.
Yeah, it's just the sidewalk, right?
And the crosswalk went in at the beach, right?
Yeah, and really that was mostly, um, just putting more signs. That one was completely, I would say, the church and beach just, it's completed then.
Yeah.
Okay, um, so I've captured, uh, the church road sidewalk out of that. Uh, support a comprehensive plan update.
We've done that.
Yeah, that's a carryover, I think we continue to do that, we, hopefully in November or.
June.
June, we'll know.
Is there anywhere where it's accessible to what? What's already been done or what's already turned up there?
We have a, a section on our website.
Okay.
That has a lot of information, not everything, it's an active evolving, they, they try to update every, you know, document, but. Um, we try to add things periodically and, um, I will say it doesn't update them, but, uh, we do a section.
It is accessible, okay.
Okay, so the last item was to create a fun parks recreation position to develop and support programs and events at the beach slash fairgrounds using our. Where's?
That, that was.
That was pieboshed because we found out you couldn't use our funds for that, so we.
Okay.
That.
You can do.
We can now.
Okay, at that point in time, we found out we couldn't do it, so we didn't work on it and said we weren't doing it.
Yeah. Uh, how do we handle that, what do we do? I mean, I, is that a carryover, do we want that to be another goal? Is that why we're asking you to question?
That's part of my thing.
Dennis, Dennis just did my job.
Yeah. Great.
So Sean said that's part of his big idea, so I think.
I was part of my homework because I forgot.
Okay, let's, let's get to it when I do your homework, okay?
I will present my homework.
Yep, I know, I know that's there. I am gonna, I'm, I'm just gonna park right down here in the marker and so. You know, we may combine a couple of items or devote a couple of items or whatever we wanna do. So then there were some items which are on the bottom third of, of the page and they were delegated to the town manager. So those are what we were talking about a little earlier in our conversation. Items that become the regular course of business, in other words, they're not an overarching visionary goal or even a substantial financial goal or something of that nature. So they were heat pumps and new windows to the town office. Free cutting and ditching and paving is part of the C I P agency plan. A business focus, the messenger to trade groups, with the uni meeting house. Um, the code enforcement officer planning board more details of applications being more approachable. Civil discourse, beginning a statement of how to follow the meeting. Uh, and special town meetings to split Article thirty eight from June and broadband articles. So those are all kind of internal ongoing things, but, uh, does anything rise out of that list that you wanna comment on? Or just reflect on or say, hey, we gotta still pay attention to that?
I'd like to hear from Eric, since we assigned them to him, um, what the status is of those, so we can decide if we need to keep going.
Sure, quickly, heat pumps, uh, at least on the second floor, and we are still considering, um. When we eventually replace our furnace in the basement, which is twenty five plus usual. Um, if, if heat pumps are gonna be an option down there, but that's in the horizon. Um, uh, free cutting, uh, or his windows. Uh, we, windows really aren't in that bad a shape, they're, 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 barely, they were very good, um, windows when we purchased them. They might need some more air sealing, uh, but the glass, I mean, it's, it's air, uh, gas wells, which should be, um. Well, we're working on it. Um, it might not be as tough much of a priority as you thought, uh, air sealing might be about to change. Um, with the business focus, uh, we do need to have folks advertising the messenger. Um, I think, um, what Carol's done at the post office has been helpful, but there's always room to add, um, you know, more, um. On that with messenger, um, and active outreach businesses, um, you know, it is ongoing, I heard the staff this morning talking to someone and saying. Would you like to be listed on our, on our, our website? So that, that is happening, uh, but always in from children's bear. Um, CEO, committee board, we had some discussions to try to. Reconcile some of those differences, but that's part of one of my big ideas, um, is to, uh, to work with volunteers and help, uh, help as much as possible, but. I think that we've had some, some challenging applications that have led to some challenging outcomes. Uh, and so, um, that one's, we're just going with it, um, we can always perform better as a community and, uh, as individual boards and committees. But providing them the resource they need to succeed is, is a real big part of that, so I wanted to be with that. Um, as far as the, um, civil discourse, I think, uh, I certainly feel personally, we've had a bit of a left turn there, but, um. The, the idea of making sure that we can have polite conversations, um, is not lost on ninety nine percent of our residents in our community. Um, rare exception, we've had very good, um, civil discourse. Uh, but again, I think the, the issue originally was Bob Vitar, unfortunately that issue got worse, maybe it'll get better, uh, but, uh, I think. That was a part of that reason why that was there, so hopefully we can find a way forward on that. The, uh, uh, special town meeting, that was addressed, um, and we have, uh, we're getting ready to do the next town meeting, starting, um. Though budget process starts in a pool, so.
There's a question, um, so with the uni meeting house, are you planning this, how is that part of those two goals yet?
I, I don't know.
Okay.
I, I, I mean, they're, they're an active, um, key of the organization, um, so I, I just, that's my only thought, but, um, that wouldn't have been what I would have put.
Okay.
Yeah, I might have plugged another historical society or something else, you know, like that, and like a, a town entity that's affiliated with it.
You know, it's not unusual too, when you're building goals, that baggage just kinda clutters into another place that needs to be, so. One thing I will close with when we, uh, finish up tonight is your goals are also there, not as hard goals, but they're as aspirational goals. And you might end up modifying during the course of the year and that's completely okay, you know? Uh, I think you state what you're doing and you had this goal and we're modifying it because of X, Y, Z. Or, boy, we didn't even know what that information and that goal meant, you know? So whatever, uh, are there any questions or? Anything within that last group that now says, I'm screaming out to be a goal? Okay, just not.
Eric's group?
Yeah, Eric's group, yep. So, uh, we completed, uh, a look back. That was quite helpful. Yep, hey, I can get some.
That was great.
Actually, I like that. I mean, I think the business focus can still always see. Something we need to.
Let me just add that, okay? Whether that makes it, it's a goal.
Right.
The whole of our deal, but.
And actually, I've gone through the list of purposes, there's a lot of those that don't exist anymore or the phone numbers disconnected or if I find those.
Absolutely, that, that's a great project.
It is. I was calling him for the. Thing coming up this summer.
Absolutely, great idea. So great, um, is everybody, uh, ready to move on to, um, considerations of goals going forward? Okay, so the way we wanted to, to do this, I shouldn't say we, because obviously I was asked to facilitate and try to figure out a way to get information flowing. Uh, is we are using what's called the one big idea approach. And what we're asking every board member, and they have some homework to do on this, was to, uh, basically, uh. Look at what the one big idea or goal, uh, that they wanted this group to accomplish in the coming year or initiate in the future. So not necessarily a goal that they alone are going to champion, but they want the group to, uh, to, to talk about. And, you know, the, we know that if you talk about, talk to yourself about one big idea, you probably have five or whatever. And we will talk a little bit about runner-up ideas, but the, you might be surprised as we build through and everybody talks about their one big idea. Um, there may be some overlap, there may be some, uh, something that is a minor thing for you, uh, that becomes elevated or whatever. Uh, so we're gonna go ahead and do that, um. Is everybody ready to do that?
Yeah.
Okay, who would like to go first?
I started it.
You started.
I kinda mentioned it in the last part, so I don't like to rock and roll with that.
Yep.
I kinda took this, Bruce, as I got five minutes, I had a big idea and my carryover goals that I think we've got to think about, right?
Okay, fine.
All right, good, I was right. That's always part of thinking about homework.
The homework. You don't, you don't doubt yourself.
There's no wrong answer. All right. Well, I, I think that my, my mind immediately went to the beach, uh, when I thought of. My big idea, which is not a big idea because it's already here, but it's how do we make it better and how, what else do we need to do to the beach, to the area, um, to make it more physical, more, or utilize. Or, or utilize such a wonderful space that we already have. Um, so some of the ideas and thoughts I had was, okay, what do we have there now and what could we easily adapt to use in the coming year? I thought, a wonderful job for those, wonderful job of sit and check passes would maybe be to have some sort of concessions. It's selling cold drinks out of the refrigerator or ice cream from a freezer.
Mm-hmm.
Because that's power of that shit. Um, I don't think that's that crazy thing to think about doing without. We're almost talking about revenue down there and so we're also talking about activities for those individuals and I think. Be nice if you're just sitting there and you stop and you grab an ice cream quest, just something that you, I guess, that looks simple. Um, I also thought, we gotta have some activities that are, are for all, all ages. Utilize the beach and bringing people together, um, sort of across the year, so whether that's a cornhole night, whether that could be, is a horseshoe bit still there, I forget. Horseshoe night, it could be. It could be a big night in the beach, you know, whatever it is, it's just a way to bring people down to that space, a wonderful space we have in town. Kind of just being active, uh, in a good light. And, you know, I don't think those are big crazy ass, I think that kinda leads into that rec, beach sort of resident recreation person. How do they orchestrate volunteers or people that have interest in a certain activity or hobby down there to, to keep her running? I don't think it'd be terrible to get people that would wanna be. The cornhole guy, the two weeks on a Thursday night or something like that. Those are the simple parts, my big idea, I think the other big part is we need docks. You know, if we ever wanna run a good swim program, um, we want, we need to have docks for people to utilize. And whether it's a platform out wide or just something all the sides, I think everybody would appreciate having docks there. Um, and lastly, I think we need the covered shelter, I think we need something bigger than if you book the beach for a birthday party, you can get one table.
A lattice.
Yes.
I believe there's a lattice.
And I don't think. There's much crazier than that. My carryover is really, um. Ball fields, fairgrounds area, I think, um, stopping that conversation would be a bit of a disservice because it's not all about. Money and just what's happening there, but what other activities could we do? I think we knew there was a lot of interest in grants, uh, and it was just hard to get those deadlines and I think that should continue, I think people are on the right path with that. That's what they gotta be at the rest of my next though.
Okay, so what we're going to do is we're gonna proceed with everybody's big ideas for, I'm gonna capture them up here, so Sean, ask your permission that in the field of finances. Do I have that captured, that kinda second app and I have the, the beach, which is, which is, uh, basically the use of it, food program, docks, shelter, that.
That all right? That not sums up my whole group?
Okay, who would like to, uh, go ahead? Steve?
Sure, um, so I don't know. He said it, it may not qualify as a really big, you know, I feel like it's too big, but I feel it's important and a little, you know, because I'm so new at this. I gotta be careful my, my purpose, because I don't know, um, a lot of stuff that's, that's gonna be full of that. It seems to me, if you're looking from the outside. Not being honest with my point, don't waste my. That as we went through making some pretty big decisions. That some people felt like their voices were not heard. And. You know, and I don't think it's, I don't think it's because of, uh, uh, intentionality, but I think it's just. We've got to pay attention to the process, I think. Maybe more than it looks, again, from the outside, seems like maybe one of the things which made it hard to get some of the big, really big things approved that we were pushing for. Is some of those are favor and want heard as part of the process, I think, I wanna encourage to pay attention to that process.
I think, I want to encourage to pay attention to that process and make it so that as we start any of that, not just, you know, whatever our goals are, if we start them, that we involve the broadest spectrum of the community that we possibly can, and really utilize our boards and committees, or separate committees and commissions as well. And, you know, I, I've heard, and I don't know, Chris, I've heard there's some kind of fluidity of the idea of like combining the conservation, trails, recreation community into one community. I'm not so sure, I can't hear that, but I would be a big fan of something like asking a work team, so like at every meeting of the rec, for example, there'd be one person from conservation, maybe one person from the trails community there, the same thing at every meeting of conservation. So I think, just get them talking more with each other. So again, I guess, you know, some are just more attention to the process and really involve people from the very beginning.
So Steve, what I've written now is broaden process to involve community on a wider ways basis. A lot of words there, but pay attention to process and capital letters. Does that make sense?
And inclusive, I'd like to.
And I will capture all of this in that final report too, so Steve. Thank you, who else would like to add something?
I will.
You're on squad.
Yeah, that's right, that's right. My, I don't even know, I, I don't need five minutes. I, I, I'm gonna take. So the idea, the idea, yeah. The idea about, you know, things that we can give back to the town. And I, I, I think that one of the biggest things about the, and, and I maintain this argument regardless of, of whatever we may hear otherwise. I, I think that the project at the fairgrounds is a good idea. I think it's a good plan, I think it is a good place for it, and I think the fairgrounds management plan says clearly in the fairgrounds management plan, that if there are recreational facilities that need to be built for the town in the center of town, that's accessible to all, they should be at the fairgrounds. I think there's ways that can happen. I think that just, to me, I feel like the public money issue that we had on the last vote was something that scared people away, especially with the financial climate. We saw that also with, with other things in the election. So what, what I always hear from people is that, you know, what, you know, this idea of anecdotal evidence meaning anything. And, and one of the things that I like is sometimes you, well, you know, people I talk to, well, the people I talk to, well, you know, there's a lot of people to talk to in the town of Reeffield, turns out. And so when I hear anecdotal evidence about things that, you know, people contact after this, that, that has very little impact on anything that I consider. I, I, I think the best way to find out is have people vote, to, to vote, to get them out there and do more than do a Facebook post, or more than just a letter to the editor, get out there and get as many people to vote one way or the other, and that's how you get results. So to that end, I would like, my big idea is to put a question on the June warrant that basically asks if based, if, if the people of Reeffield support the development of recreational facilities at that complex that do not utilize town funds. And it's a question, it's a simple, yes, I do support this, or no, I don't. And it's broad enough to say, okay, we clearly have evidence, people wanted it, voted it, the majority of people backed this, then how do we get it done? Then we can start bringing in the stakeholders, because right now, I think that Steve is right, we have a lot of stakeholders, and we're trying to recruit through the process. But sometimes that process is manipulated to the point where I think it's just, it, it's like that's, it's very frustrating. I think I get very frustrated with that. So what, what I'd like to do is have it be, and if they, if, if it passes, then how can we then bring the stakeholders in? Let's find a way to do that process then, and let's find a way, but this to me would solve a lot of the issues about, you know, well, the people I've talked to. No, if, if we win the majority, if, if this thing passes and gets most yes votes, then we can start.
Okay, so you're talking about that. Yeah, okay, so fairgrounds, rec plan, a June warrant question, and the June warrant question is understood to be an overarching, non-financial question.
Exactly.
Okay, so I've got that. Who else, would you like to go?
Kathy go.
Okay, sure. Not gonna roll dice here, so.
Catherine, I'm sorry, this is my head already, I'm so sorry.
Well, I thought you were gonna block me for seasons.
No, we're, we're just working on this. I'm working on it.
Sorry.
It's okay. So my big idea, I want more than one, just.
No, you get one to start it.
Okay. These big ideas aren't the only things we're gonna draw our goals from, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, then I'm good, I have one.
Yeah, the, the minion.
Go ahead.
Okay, so we've talked about this before, and I've offered to do it, and Eric has even set up a Google folder, a Google Docs folder for us to work on this, and it hasn't happened. And I, I'm observing the past year plus, now that we're into this year, my C and D is now more than ever in the past. Although, I've been on this for the fifteen years I've been involved in the select board. And it's to make the procedure manuals for the select board members. And I'm not talking about select board policy, and I'm not talking about changing our or bylaws, that kind of thing. And we've had different versions over the years, and most of them have gotten lost. And that really frustrates me, and it, it comes from a point of, let's say that we've had several, several different people in the town clerk position. And so you have a job description for the town clerk. Well, if the job description is all you have, and that person comes in to do the job, they are screwed and so are we. You need to have some sort of operational procedures that have been laid out, like you do this report in this month, and you've got to be ready for elections in that month. Well, who do you talk to for elections? And I'm sure that we have things written up that tell people how to do that, but we don't really have anything written up for the select board. And so I'm just gonna read a couple of things, it can turn into something that we could talk about before. As a select board member, you not only, I didn't break this, this was borrowed from Saco. You not only establish important and often critical governance policies for the community, but you are also a board member and responsible for the fiscal health of a public corporation having annual budget of X million of dollars. The scope of services and issues addressed by the town organization go well beyond those frequently reported in newspapers or discussed in select board meetings. We would have and adopt our own procedural, procedures manual to assist the select board by documenting accepted practices and clarifying expectations. And it would be important for orientation of new members, that members of the select board gain an understanding of the full range of services and programs provided by the organization. New members joining the select board would meet with department heads to provide informations about what they do and where facilities, and meet with key staff. I've witnessed with Sean and Carol and with Steve, this, it takes a lot to figure out, why am I doing this? Where am I supposed to look for the history? How do I know what's been going on? What did we do about this before? Many years and years ago, we didn't keep, well, it wasn't that many, maybe three or four, we didn't keep numbers by things on our agendas. And so we couldn't track, how often have we talked about this? When was the last time we talked about this? But now that we have a key for that, we can go back and see, because the topics are, are kind of archived and kept in a list. And I just, I would like us to just formally make this something that we made sure we do this year, so that we don't have other board members coming along and not knowing what they're expected to do on, and, and what things are appropriate for meetings, what things are appropriate for smaller conversations, say between board members, or between a board member and the town manager, rather than doing it in a public meeting. And where do I go to find more information? And I just think it would be really useful, especially if we're trying to recruit new people, and sometimes younger people than just retired folks to come and serve on the board. If people knew what they were gonna be getting into, they might be more willing to do it.
Or they might not.
But at least they know what they're getting into.
But at least you would have a better idea of what you're getting into. And I, I just think it would, it would help the whole board to function better, and I think it would put people more at ease once they are on the board. And we've all agreed to do this before, but I'm just thinking it's not happening unless we make it happen.
Yes.
That's my idea.
Okay, so I've captured that as a little point for select board, formal manual operations practices, et cetera. And I know there's more information that, when I look at the recording, that I'll be able to fill out some additional information, if that's an adopted goal. So Carol.
Um, now that I have a big idea, as much as an overarching thing we need to keep in mind, is we're gonna have a list of things we wanna do, and then I think we have a list of things that we have to do. It's gonna be a tough year for everybody. Something on the news today was saying an average family may spend as much as four hundred dollars more per month than they did a year ago. I think the vote was, a lot of it may have been financial. I talked to a patient the other day, last year, I remember talking to him, and he couldn't afford his prescriptions, and how am I gonna beat my house, and he's a resident. And I talked to him the other day, and I said, hey, are you applying for beat assistance? He goes, I make ten dollars more per month than the cutter. And his, I know his oil's going up this year. So I think we have to really be careful about any spending whatsoever that doesn't have to be done this year. It's just not the year to do the frivolous, boy, it'd be really nice if we had X type of things. And just keep in mind, there are senior citizens on a very tight budget. There's young families trying to raise their family, get to work, and everything's higher. I think we just really need to be careful. And, and the other day, I guess I was really confused or surprised, the big budget, the big vote on Churchill. That wasn't in the budget vote earlier this year, right?
Uh, it was, we have a reserve account that's set aside for that work. So we're actually not raising taxes to, to, to do that, I mean, there might be some in there, but most capital projects that we undergo are built up from incremental need from reserves, or whom I call it, but that, that one was, was almost exclusively reserve funds. That had been the previous.
Because I was like, we're gonna have fifty thousand dollars, and when we have to do it now, that's why I was like, how is this not on the radar that we were discussing it like several months ago?
I'm sorry, so it's coming through the world, I mean, it was part of the capital investment plan, it's been there for four, five years, and this is the cycle. So as part of our long-term planning, I, I hear what you're saying, absolutely, about wanting to be mindful of those things. I've been thinking some of the same things myself about this coming budget, about how are we going to approach capital improvements? I think that we're gonna adjust our budget schedule perhaps to be mindful of that, and move that closer to the front to talk about. But anyway, that's an aside.
I mean, just any, the cost of everything right now is higher, so if there's something you don't have to do in the next calendar year, waiting for things to level out is even the machinery, the gas, the labor, petroleum, or the top, whatever, all of it is at its peak right now. So that's why I like to be cautious in conversation.
True.
And hand in hand with that is, is the open to businesses. I talked to a local person that is thinking his business elsewhere, because his, his business was approved, but the planning board was like, you have to put like tall shrubbery like hiding your business. It's like, what is that about? Are we embarrassed to have new business, and he has to hide it behind a shield of everything? I'm just like, things just don't seem to make sense, that it's like, bring your business, and we're welcome to have you, and let's, you know, maybe look like a thriving town, and a business is not something we should be embarrassed about or hide. It should be welcomed, and it should be promoted, and it's also part of bringing more tax base into the town, which goes hand in hand with people having a hard time and keeping taxes down and the whole thing, so.
Carol, I have a spending strength slash witness welcoming as the idea kind of capsulizing that. Okay, so, everybody see their item reflected up there? That's good. So I appreciate that. And what we're gonna do now is, is kind of discuss each dates, and see if they become, if you will, an overarching goal, okay? Before I get into that, I want to ask you if there's any must items that we should also have on our list, or there's some also rants that were on your big idea, that list that you're just dying to say, so we can capture that as well.
So are you saying this is kind of a toward list? This is the time to throw on anything else we want to consider as a goal?
Your other big ideas, yes.
Yeah, it's your time.
Media might be.
So not just one?
Yes, every.
Do you see the way that came about fully? That is a really clean manufacturing to be kept. That's really.
Yeah.
That's the engineering.
Yeah.
So I used to work, I used to work for newspapers, and we bought these, I think it's called flying pacers, which means when you do a role change, you actually don't stop the machine, it just kind of lines up, gets to the same attack speed, and it goes through. And so, one of the jobs I had was public communications, and so I would always end up getting a call every couple of weeks from somebody that would say, you know, my newspaper had a very weird fold down the middle of it, why wasn't it? They were, they were where, where the role changed at, it was. And so I told them they would rent, win a prize, and I could give them ten dollars off. It worked out well. So, so are, are, are we, are there any must dos this year that, are contract negotiations up? I do know you have a comp plan that's gonna come to fruition, I'm assuming? So would I just put comp plan like that?
Yeah.
Well, we have that as a carryover.
Yeah, that's a carryover, I do.
Okay, well, I will.
No, that's fine.
I'll cross it out. Okay, because I do have it, right?
Yeah, you do.
Okay, so. But you do have a contract.
Yep, collective bargaining contract, yes.
Right, okay.
And when is that up there?
Um, it's up in June.
So you will negotiate that sometime during the course of the year? Yes.
So it's.
We haven't done the town manager's contract. That's due by October, right?
I think that's, we switched it to January or June, we, we moved that around.
Dennis, you might be aware of that.
Yeah, we gotta do the, the review, yeah.
Okay, so.
So those are must dos.
Well, it sounds like his is a normal course of business.
No, I mean, the contract and the comp plan.
The contract and, and the comp plan are, are, it would seem to me they're must, must do, so you know.
We have committed some attention, we have not said what, to the mooring issue. We have said we would consider something about it in some form, right?
Anything else?
I'd like to see us do something with all of the town properties in a clerical sense. I'd like to see them all listed, evaluated, valued, their purposes listed, what they're used for, who uses them or doesn't. For why, pardon me?
For why.
On, so that.
Oh, town owned properties?
Town owned properties, so that we can make sure that we are giving due diligence to all the town properties. And that people know what exists and where, I mean, we all own it, and we don't really have it, thank you, that was a much more succinct way of doing that. And I think they should all be managed.
Thousands of years of expertise.
I think they should all be managed under one plan, their town properties.
Okay, anything else that somebody wants to add?
Can you just add management plan there?
Sure.
Oh, and that topic, I always am like confused about the. about the open space and twenty thousand dollars every year we can spend to buy land or something? Isn't that on the budget? Open space?
Well, I think it was fifty thousand this year, but yes, it's, it's money that we, the town has voted to set aside so that if a, say a piece of farmland were to go on the market to be sold to be developed, the town might say, oh, wait a minute, we don't really want that to be developed. We wanna keep that as open space. And so we would have some money so that we could afford to buy it. Or go in with the Kennebec Land Trust or some other group to.
What are we, why are we doing that? Why is the town buying property to sit there? I don't, I don't comprehend why we're, we're spending town people's money to buy a property to sit there. It's not producing anything and maybe costing, I don't, that one boggles my mind. And are, are we doing this every year?
Yeah, it is.
But we don't spend it. It's all saved.
Yeah.
Huh?
We haven't spent any of it.
But you're buying a piece of property.
No, it's, it's a savings account. So that if a property came up and the town people said, okay, we don't want a nuclear power plant on that land. We want some, we don't want that. So we wanna buy that. We wanna try to preserve that land. This would give us a fund that we could utilize to try and do that.
Have we been doing it?
We have not.
I think we haven't because you haven't had the resources. So one example would be, um, you don't have no businesses. Um, people want agriculture in reed field. Um, if we were able to have a piece of land that the town is purchasing, we could lease it to farmers to run agricultural businesses in town. Or we could use it for affordable housing as, which is another emerging priority for the town. Um, land purchasing, uh, land banking is a really valuable tool. It's very common. Um, and it can be a great economic development tool because again, you can support people who are workers. You can support, uh, businesses like agriculture. Um, and you can preserve open space, which helps maintain property values, um, and like protect ecological areas like, you know, watershed, uh, things like that. So it's a common tool. It's a valuable tool. Um, and it's one that we have been getting more active in. But we haven't actually spent any of those funds on leadership in a, in a very long time. Many, many decades ago, the town, I think, picked up, um, you know, a parcel here and there, but, um.
So if the board, if the board's willing, we can continue with that discussion if it's evolving into, um, a goal item. Or it sounds to me like more it's an understanding discussion amongst yourself that you might have at budget time, you budget that.
Yeah, I wouldn't say this, this conversation is not about a goal, but I think it's town properties. Yeah, it's just the inventories, right?
Okay, oh, okay. Okay, great. Um, what else do we have?
Oh, other, oh, little ideas.
They're not necessarily little, but things that you wanna see kind of on the final document or think ought to be there. Um, and probably what, when we get to that, we're probably gonna eliminate some of these.
Absolutely.
Or we're going to assign them in such a fashion that they get attention, but they're not something that fits in all consuming goals of select force.
Yeah.
Okay?
Absolutely, Eric.
I just want to throw one idea that I think is very important would be the, um, volunteer, supporting our volunteers in a few different ways. Um, uh, two, two years of COVID, the department, everybody has made, uh, already difficult volunteer jobs more challenging. Uh, the more of communication, more challenging, uh, the physical, uh, you know, work being done more challenging, all of those things. Um, and we've had some pretty challenging issues, come on, devices issues. Um, and I think there's been a lot of, um, challenges for the volunteers. Um, and they are the fundamental piece of our community. My, my job, uh, a big part of my job is to help volunteers succeed. Um, select board included. Um, I'm here to help you folks do your jobs the best you can. Um, and it's the same way with all of our boards and committees. Uh, and I want to recognize that the last two years have been quite challenging. I might want to pursue, uh, a few different things to help, um, you know, bring, bring everybody back together. I wanna get back to have a volunteer appreciation. Uh, and then I'd love to have them install, um, because it's been two years plus since we did that. Um, I think, um, continuing to have ongoing training opportunities and, uh, that collaboration between committees, um, as was mentioned, is really valuable. I particularly want to see, um, a joint workshop between planning board and appeals board. I think that will help streamline, um, everybody's understanding of what the process is, what their roles are. Um, and, and help avoid friction by, by getting everybody on the same page. So, um, there are places like that where I think we can find success. I think conservation, racket trails, um, the idea of, of a super committee, but maybe having periodic, uh, meetings together um, might be a good idea. Um, but I, uh, I think volunteers and supporting volunteers in a few different ways is really important. Um, including active recruitment. Um, in the pandemic, we see people lose, uh, leave their jobs, uh, the leave board force. Uh, and generally kind of disengage from society. Volunteering has been kind of helped the same impact. So we have fewer volunteers than perhaps we used to. Uh, and I think that it would be great for the select board, um, to have an active role. Um, and just bringing as many people on the goal as they can. So that's my, um, my thought on a few of the pieces of it.
So supporting volunteers, um, Eric.
Yeah.
For recognition, the processes of supporting and their functionality, I would say. And then, uh, some improvement as well. What else do we have that needs to go on this list? I love that silence.
I would like to add to that one a little bit.
Okay, go ahead.
And I think it's, my, my, part of what I was thinking was something along the lines of our relationship with the school. And it's not just that one budget meeting a year that we go to. Maybe some sort of more collaboration, school conversation about how we can support one another as an entity together. And, you know, what opportunities do our students have to volunteer in town that, that we're not letting them tap into or they're not tapping into, uh, right now?
Okay, so more collaboration and.
Well, just volunteering with students, like what student opportunities do we have in town to make them more engaged with, with our community?
Okay. So I'm just saying, um, for now, and again, I'll be able to go back and take more collaboration and engagement with schools. Yeah, it's good. Talking about the board kind of leading that.
Yes.
Okay, and I'm gonna write your name on that chunk. That's second, same from you. And this is Kat. See, I can use a shortcut.
That one I can live with.
That one too.
Don't say that. I don't wanna, that'll break your nerves.
You can call me Kitty. That's what my grandchild.
Kitty?
Kitty, oh, my little book.
That's a Chanty's nickname.
I have a small one and it's, um.
Yeah, go ahead.
So the Union Meeting House is considered a town historic site, but there's another one in town that I think is getting, um, patrolled. It's the Jesse Lee Church. It was on the comprehensive plan and previous one as one of two local historic sites. Um, and actually Jesse Lee is local historic. Union Meeting House is state historic. But we wanna make sure it's not falling off the list of recognition or support. Um, and I don't know how to bring that up to the.
It's an act, it's an active church, right?
Yes, it is.
So it's a little different than Union Meeting House in this, and I'm only giving information that I happen to know that would be of legal terminology. And Eric can jump on me if I'm incorrect. But a, um, uh, an elected entity like this giving money to a church is different than giving it to a non-church operating facility that just happens to have been a church at one time. So I think there's a difference there.
I don't think about that.
But I, you know, I can't apply that, but I can put down Jesse's church.
The only thing, I mean, the Methodist church we can still is the active church. That is one we support because it's like historically important. And it's.
Is it a nonprofit? Is it, is Jesse Lee Church like the friends of, well?
It's part of the.
No, it's owned by the Methodist church.
Okay, yeah, I've gone to a Christmas service, Christmas service there and it's conducted by the churches up in Kansel.
Right, and it is on the state and national level that is recognized. It's not just a local thing.
Right.
Because of who Jesse Lee was on the circuit historically.
So it's the seal of belief.
I think it's an important point about historical preservation here. I absolutely agree with that. I've seen, um, you know, a lot of places in town destroyed or go by the wayside or gutted, um, and made a little bit something or not. Um, and so, and that's one of those things that I see emerging from the comprehensive plan is this idea of, of trying to focus more on historic. So I can, I can see exactly what you're saying.
That's what I was wondering is if there's a way to make sure that's part of the comprehensive plan going forward.
So Kara, I'm not, I'm not being mean here, but, um, if the Jesse Lee Church came up for sale, if you want the town to buy it. Think about it.
That's not an appropriate question. It's a historic building that needs to be protected.
Okay.
Um, because of its history.
Right.
Yeah.
I'm gonna add something to number sixteen and maybe you have it there. I'm not sure what you mean by supporting process.
Yeah.
I wanna support the members of boards and committees. They are all volunteers.
I'll just put in, I'll just put in here.
Yes.
And, uh, Kara, I, I was trying to do a little bit, I'm sorry.
I know. I thought one, a chakri, and probably nobody else would have bought from their right hand. So yes, I probably would.
So, so we have about eighteen here?
Yep.
Okay, so obviously we're gonna work on that list and determine what kind of needs to go into, uh, and some of it might be combined.
Yes.
Some of them might be actually very related to one another. Uh, but we're gonna take a, a, a few minutes stretch rate. So how about ten minutes?
Oh, perfect.
Is that good? I'm sorry, I didn't. I, I thought I would just kind of lose another thing. It didn't work.
All right.
Okay?
Well, I will say when I, my first, um, um, was learning about the town, I thought the town seal might have actually been the Union Meeting House because it was so talked about. But it's, but it's not. It, it, if you had that on Spider, it would have been similar, but it's just in the church. So it's, um, that was interesting to me to kind of think about how, how much, you know, focus we have on that one structure and Jesse Lee Church.
Well, that's, that's the thing, cause it doesn't have parking. It doesn't have a restroom. It doesn't, it has heat in, um, wood burning stoves. And so we just had like a church service in two years ago. And people park across along the street. See, you have like elderly people getting out of their car and they're coming up over for clothes. They're bringing their clothes, housing up over. And there is a, um, cemetery, a burial going on. So they were parking in the street and we were parking in the street and it's like.
There, there was some, a lot of that about, um, about the parcel, uh, adjacent to the parcel.
Yes.
The building actually has a fully footprint, that it has a quarter acre, but it doesn't say where it is in the law. It's just a, it's an unusual arrangement and there's some, um.
Would you bless the minister and I that? And we all talked about that. And we were waiting for the term to come back to something and they so put it on hold.
Yeah.
We have a new minister and she is.
That's the one we got with.
Yeah, cause she asked, I was asking if you could re-invite that discussion.
Yeah, well, it ended up, I mean, it was, I mean, I think there was, it was.
She was probably just getting started.
It was really interesting and I, I think.
No, it was a pretty detailed conversation. And we weighed out exactly where what we could do in terms of putting things forward to the town in a town meeting or not.
Yeah, but that question.
But then there's the whole question of, of what can we give and what can we not give?
Yeah.
And then that would all really have to come back to the church votes to answer and explain, not to the town. And Lass and what is her name?
Shannon.
Shannon. Lass and Shannon weren't ready to go down that road. Of having to explain, there's like a four acre parcel, is that what it is, maybe?
Um, I think so, yeah.
Right, and they have a quarter acre in one spot. And so we had talked about like expanding and having a parking lot that could be used for church functions as well as for the cemetery functions and maybe, uh, some sort of a restroom area. They could be used for both. And so maybe we could explain it that way, that, you know, there's a town thing and a.
Exactly.
And so we left the ball in there.
She wants to read, read some paragraphs of that concept. So that would be free to run the agenda?
If, if, um, if they wanna do that, we could start talking soon in order to be prepared for June. Because this, and if I have a final, a final proposal, whatever that might look like, I would say by March, in March.
But I think.
So that we can have a better, um.
I think if you wanna go the same route to start though, is to just have a informal meeting with the town manager and one of us with, I think Lass is a trustee.
Yes.
Um, and the minister, and just kind of notch that around.
Yeah.
And then just like, if that's something they still really wanted.
They do, yeah, cause it was real. I have a picture of like the parking in these little old ladies.
Oh, yeah. Oh, there's no question. There's.
And then people are coming off of seventeen after the.
But see, that falls again into a piece of those town property. Church water to our temple, my, my years ago.
Right.
That, and I don't think they really knew either, but someone found the deed and so what do we do with that? You know, it ought to be considered.
Yeah, it was like people in the car, it's like, and then there's a bally, and so the car is like straddled.
Oh, it's horrible.
And I can see this whole person getting out in the bally and like crying. You know, it's just.
So.
It's interesting, but do you see it? Do you give that, because if you give that land to the church, why are you giving that to a no.
Yeah, I don't know that they wanted it.
We wanted to sell it, but they weren't interested in buying it, you know, because of the money.
I think they would talk to more with the town if they were sitting in the car. If we put the restaurants, it's kind of like a joint that you do, cause like something.
And that, that's the problem. And I'm very, very nice with the church.
Yep.
Yeah, I was doing a week's.
I suggested that.
Unlike it, they're, they're fired July sixth. It might not set. You say that again. You were going to learn. Oh, that's what that is. Was Lass? I was gonna get there, it's like, actually, people. Yeah. It takes us, whether, some people will sit in the lake and circle around and stay in the river.
Yeah.
I like that. Yeah, so it might be. So.
Cause it could, it could be a twenty.
You know, I had, I had a couple.
Yeah.
Oh, speaking of the beach.
Yeah. Right, this is, wow, you are living your best life, retired. See, you are the best life, retired. Is it time, BB?
I think it probably is. It's time for you folks.
I really, it, it, this break scheduled is working for me. I like it.
And we're ahead of time even for you.
Well, I, we are, um, and I, I guess I would start with the comments that we have a great deal of reps here.
Yeah.
Um, so we may need some of that.
Time to, to cut away, yeah.
No, we're working well together.
Yeah, I like this.
Yeah, okay, well, we'll see.
I didn't, we did, we get rid of anything that's a person like three.
Yeah.
No, we even wanted to, we're all set.
Very technical, very technical.
Thanks for having us.
Okay. I'm so sorry. This is what it's.
Okay, um.
Yes.
So are we ready to re- re- begin?
We're ready.
Restart. So there are actually two areas that I had not addressed under considerations. One was ordinances. And the other was policy priorities. And I think some of these goals may speak to those. But if there's a particular ordinance that is crying out for revision or a particular policy that needs to be written, this is where we would say that.
Okay.
So you have one.
I have one of those, yes.
Okay. Go ahead.
Okay, yes, sir. Uh I would like to take a look. Uh and I think this is an interesting part about the town uh business collaboration. Talked to Eric a few times. I'd like to take a look at the beach ordinance, parking ordinance at the beach. Um and somehow enter in a lease agreement or some sort of agreement. Um that instead of parking on the side of seventeen, that the weather bank be able to use that parking lot. After like five P M. after the beach is technically closed or whatever. I I I think that is, I I hate it when I go by there and I see those cars parked on the side of seventeen because I always think about the safety of people and I especially around there. It's just something. So um this is something that they've actually asked about as well. Um and it it's something that I think would be uh it again, it's it's simply a sort of a like a lease agreement. Um that they would be able to use uh the beach or uh or or it would be codified into the ordinance some way that after five P M. if you're, you know, the weather bank can use that parking lot.
Okay.
Different conditions and so forth.
Right, and oh, please, there's.
We're not gonna, we're not gonna write anyone.
I'm not smart enough to know all that.
Any anything else on the ordinance, policy loss? And again, some of that may fall out of these goals. So my next question is, how do you wanna proceed? Okay, we can do this two ways. Um one way is to try and pick out those items we see is the most important and then talk about capturing the other items. And either an aspirational statement. And when I say an aspirational statement, what I mean is we will pay attention to these four bullet points. So I'm not saying that these will be the ones, but we could say we will pay attention to getting the warrants. No, we'll pay attention to uh spending of strength. We will pay attention to uh making sure the comp plan is uh shared properly. Okay, so we can reverse engineer these, number one, which is to say here's the items we think go on that kind of list, or we can work it from the top down. How do you wanna do this?
Well, I I already, I would just add that number three, the cannabis is under the ordinance. So that would be, I would say that would, that's already one that we know is gonna continue to be under ordinance looking at. Um just just right off the top.
So on that being.
And I'm not talking just purely about ordinance.
Yeah, right, right, yeah.
I think we, I'd like to structure it the same way we've done the last several years and that that first line be re- review, revise and draft governance documents as needed. And then let, we can take several of those things and put them in underneath that. Because we always have those things that we have to take care of.
Yeah, that's.
Okay, so the re- review, revise and draft governance documents as needed would be the cannabis?
Yep.
Yeah.
Maybe even the broad.
I was gonna say broadband solutions just sounds like it's to do with their spectrum, whatever that word is that I can't.
Franchise.
That is.
Okay, so broadband.
Is the comp plan under that?
No, that's, that's not.
Okay.
That's a separate thing. But uh in the beach parking, we just add that, Bruce.
And the beach uh parking.
I think that could be more of a park too. And my feeling is that there's a lot of issues there that we haven't been able to address. Um nothing more than something that's as confusing as the the fairgrounds management plan. But um having something that establishes more of the parameters, operating parameters, especially since we made us from a a permit based system to an open public beach, there's been a lot of changes there. I think that's important.
How about, could contracts go under that?
Oh, the contract department?
Yeah.
Yeah, that should.
Yeah, I I think what I would suggest is that you have A, which is dealing with actual um governance documents. Um and then maybe B would be um items that we need to keep, you know, an eye on, attention to.
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah.
I'll I'll have to break pretty worried for that.
I don't doubt it.
I don't, I don't do it standing up, but I do it sitting down.
Yes, of course.
So does that make sense?
Yeah, I'm just curious. In fact, I I wonder if Steve, your thing about attention process is a procedural, procedural guidance that we wanna develop in terms of how we engage people with our, you know, any project that we're gonna do.
You mean put that into the the governance?
Yep.
Documents? Yeah.
Okay.
Well, I I just, I'd take you what you were saying, but do you think that's where that fits? Do you think it would work that way or?
I don't think it can end there, but I think that we could start.
Yeah, I think it provides a select board we define a a policy or guidance to to enact that sharing of responsibilities, that engagement of the community through a selection of one of the words.
I think it would be useful if if Bruce could take a different color and and kind of circle the ones that we're gonna put into this so we can see which ones are being of this.
I'll cross them out. How's that sound?
Draw some pictures too.
Okay. So we kind of dealt with the cannabis.
Yeah.
We put broadband solutions in that.
Yes.
Uh the comp plan is on that list.
Now, can I ask this? Is the, okay, I'm sorry. If we're just, are we just kind of?
Oh, the comp plan was not on that list. The beach parking was on that list.
Yeah.
I think the comp plan really can be just an observing item because it's it's well underway.
Yeah.
We've got like four months basically to finish it.
Is it a goal? Does it have to be under our goals?
No, it's under the review, revise.
Okay, okay. That's what I'm saying.
That's what you're putting in here.
Let me, let me also say this. It's also um it's it's also permitted to say that doesn't rise to a goal.
Yeah.
We're gonna pay attention to that anyhow because we have to.
Right, absolutely.
So I mean, you can also say that.
It's a more critical eye, this sort of elimination round of things, yeah.
Yeah.
The.
But I did, I didn't, I'm not suggesting that.
Certainly not.
Select word of uh procedures manual could go under that.
Um that would definitely go under documents, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Cause you, cause when you write that, you write your policy essentially.
Right.
Yeah, good call.
Um and that, we already said contracts.
Yeah, I'm just gonna put contractor.
So that takes up.
Contract department, that's not really governance document or the.
I'm gonna use it, I'm gonna use a different caption phrase for that.
Okay, procedures.
And in other words, I'm gonna use that language that you like Catherine, and I'm gonna add a sentence to it.
Perfect.
And then you decide when I write this, that that's not your goal, how I write it.
Well, the whole portal.
The board will actually, but yeah, well, the board will actually probably rewrite that.
It's eleven.
Eleven, thank you. Um anything else that kind of goes into?
Oh, has Steve.
Does it morning?
Oh, mornings definitely.
Did you have a some feedback on mornings?
Oh, just um that that um I think we anticipated the outcomes would be expanding ordinance, but that's not necessarily guaranteed.
Okay.
We're also just watching.
But so that could be under the the governance documents, that's.
I think it ought to be. I mean, the only way that we can actually have an impact on that is if we have an ordinance. I think it has to be a government document.
Right.
Or or we don't, you know, one of the others.
So um so capturing it under that doesn't mean we have to end up with a mooring.
Right.
Right, it means we're.
It means.
We're just organizing.
You're gonna make sure that that is discussed during the fourth of the year.
And I think Steve agreed that we could take number nine and put that in under the governance documents.
Yeah, it seems like we could weave that into just about everything that we're doing, just to make sure that people uh sort of almost like a.
Let me ask you this, okay? I'm just thinking out loud.
Please, that's why you're.
Does what Steve says says and what um Carol has said, do those kind of create a like a guidance for the board?
Yeah.
That we might put in an aspirational statement rather than into a list of documents that we're gonna checklist against?
Well, I.
When I say aspirational, I mean you still can make them operational.
Right, but I certainly noticed when 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 they said that it it, I guess, cause I don't know uh aspirational, but it it sounded like to me that's something that we can it's almost reminds me of like when we talked about energy efficiency last year, we did, we wanted to sort of look at that at all levels of the selector, right? We didn't wanna just say like green, we didn't wanna be green. It's like, no, let's take a look at efficiencies all the way across. I feel like those, when I heard those, that kind of reminded me of that, like let's have, make sure we're including people and also being smart about money in all things that we do, in all of those goals. So it does seem like they're applicable to all of those, um if that's what you mean, Bruce, by aspirational.
Yeah, I was talking about overarching.
Yeah.
I think.
And then I, by the way, Steve, I I don't wanna reinterpret what you're saying, so you hit me if I'm wrong.
Yeah.
No, I thi- I think I like the idea of the overarching, something we could sit at all time.
Yeah.
It's like a value.
Yes, a select or value. That might be a nice list of things.
It is like a value, yeah. So let me put D as values and.
Oh, I like that.
I think we have to be really careful, speaking from many years of experience, which I mean all bring with us from our own professions. Um you can leave it worse to water, but you can't make it drink. We can publish things, we can advertise things, we can post things. We can mail things to people and you will still have people who say, I never heard about this. And there is just a limit to what we can do. We can try all kinds of things and I'm not saying you shouldn't. But I mean, the mooring issue in winter is a prime example of that. It was public, it was advertised. They did talk about it in public meetings. And it wasn't until the vote took place that most people said, oh, my goodness, why didn't I know about that? You know, and I think maybe that is kind of what happened with our fairground projects and and broadband state. Things got to a certain point and and I don't want us to beat ourselves up trying to make something where we're just gonna beat our heads against the wall.
Yeah. But I also, but I I do think it's always something we have at the back of our minds for those two things. I think that's that's also just good governance is being fiscally responsible and including as many votes and hearing the voices, I think, you know.
So so I included Steve in that.
Yeah.
And we did that. So we need to hear from Carol if she feels that's where that should go. The fiscal restraint.
Yeah.
So that can go into.
And definitely under our C I P discussion with the budget.
With the duty. Yeah, value. So be prepared with this always.
I'm not gonna put the business one in there, great, unless you want me to buy it into that.
I think those are.
I keep that separate.
That was for like a land use ordinance thing that she was talking about.
Yeah.
The business one?
Yeah.
I thought it was a little broader.
I don't know. She was talking about like businesses wanting to be a town and they, there are too many restrictions on them.
Did she actually listen to you? Is that correct?
Yeah, or just, you know. Positive then, um so forth.
Okay, so I can put that in the overall as well, for sure.
Yeah, please.
Okay. So we've got that in there. Spending and the uh.
C I R was just short.
It's amazing.
It's not shorter.
It's it's more organized.
Yeah, organized. It would seem to me too, if I was to make a recommendation from this list, that the town properties inventory would go under documentation.
Yeah, absolutely right.
Who would be doing that one, so?
I think you may be assigning that to probably the town manager.
That's what I was. I'm wondering if we need that.
You know, I've talked about.
Where I was kind of going with that though is that last year we had town manager responsibilities also. Should that be something we put?
I think you can bring in conservation and maybe trails to assist with those things. Because they utilize a lot of those lands and they don't utilize a lot of them also.
I think rec, rec.
And records. And so because there's a stakeholders who who use town properties.
Yeah, the physical inventory assessment, I mean, one of that is actually, I think, you know, a a good start of it, you know, comprehensive plan. So that actually ties into that goal pretty well too.
And it's in our G I S mapping.
You saw most of it, yeah.
It may have to be some mapping done still.
So I'm just trying to capture um the other things that are in here, look quickly. I'm gonna draw an arrow here. It's a fairground. Warrant question is kind of related.
And then parking record, thank you, over.
Where's parks and racks?
Number seven.
That was the carryover one, right? Okay, so I think we have the field and finances, the fair, the fair warrant question, yeah. Uh the fairground warrant question. Um uh parks and racks kind of continuance, so that can reach, those three are probably confined to one goal. Does that make sense? Agreed.
Is the beach use part of that open to, or is that dimension?
Well. I don't, this keeps it to the. I see what you're saying. It's parks and rec probably crosses to both. So maybe your fairground warrant question and the field and finance one go together. And then maybe the parks and rec.
And then maybe the beach could go together with that.
Yeah. Does that make sense?
Eric?
I I think it makes sense. I just wanna be very careful how we classify these things because I do think the fairgrounds is a park. I think that some people disagree with that, but I think that it's the the language that we have used has been a bit prescriptive, maybe a little bit divisive. I think the 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 beach actually, I think, has as much or more conservation value on the fairgrounds because we have like five, eight years of marsh. It's a town property that's attached to that. So I I just wanna make sure that we're not kind of getting into this mindset of of just classifying things without really thinking about them. I I think Catherine's idea more broadly looking um at our town properties really helps with that. Because it it is, yeah. They they all have different values.
Right, and I think that's the value in putting all of those together. And this would be something we renew very soon. I think it was all together in one place.
Yeah.
And then whatever discussions we're having on these other topics, we look at the broader picture of this is what's in our town. Do these things make sense together? Are they cohesive? Or are they contrary to each other?
We did have business focused down here.
Into the aspirational.
Trying to fill the code there guys.
It is on.
Okay.
Is it two one or two gold? I'm sorry.
I think they're two. The four or two gold.
Oh. So I'm ending up with three items. I'm not quite. Okay, we we have some temperature stuff to do.
Cause it's seventy six.
Has anybody objected that turn was off?
I have no problem.
Yeah, turn off.
Turn off.
There's plenty of hot air.
Is it hot here?
No, I said hot air.
Straight from the horses now.
Exactly.
I'm sorry, who? That was a good one.
So does sixteen kind of go into that overarching values, the volunteers piece?
I abs- I think so, yeah, absolutely. That's something we can do and all have a mind with everything, right? How about, I also, I also, as a side note, I'm sorry, we gotta like, I love the sign out there, but it's like, it's time to refresh it.
It needs to go down.
Yeah, I kept telling her, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'll do it, I'll do it. There's a sign up here, it's a thank you volunteer sign, but now it just sort of is like a.
Oh, that's nice.
Yeah, it is a nice, it is nice. I agree.
It's old.
But yeah.
We could save it and put it up another time.
Yeah, I it just, I, we visually need a little change of like, you know. Go ahead, Bruce.
Okay, so we have two more items.
Gotcha.
Can can I ask her just one?
Yeah, absolutely.
Is the parks and rec, what does that mean again? I I just can't keep thinking of this.
So. Parks, parks and rec, and correct me if I'm wrong, cause I'm just restating, I think, is um or is a goal that is carried over from last year. Which was to lend more organizational structure. which was to lend more organizational structure, um, to the job in parks and rec. And then, um, then Sean's big idea was to, um, basically do some of those enhancements. He, he kind of built on that, I think.
Yeah.
And so that's the combination of those two, does that make sense? So the, the goal last year, who passed that?
I have a ready.
Parks and rec position to develop and support programs and events at the beach fairgrounds using our A R P name.
And so that's being updated with Sean's additional, um, reflections on that. Does that make sense, Steve?
Yeah.
Okay, did I explain that well? Okay, great.
But we'll talk about the beach, can I add one thing?
Yes.
And this would be like a, money was not object. It's not epic.
Perfect.
But, uh, the playground is, it's, my daughter used to like grab the chain and she'd have rust marks on her jackets and shirts that it's, it's awful, it's beyond awful.
Part of now that it's open to the public, we are able to apply for grants for the beach.
Playground grants are a big deal, and I.
People love those, but yes, I agree, it looks like, it, it looks like they bought it secondhand from a prison.
Go down to Booth Bay and see what they're doing with playground, that they, I believe, I believe it's a hundred percent grant fund.
Yeah. Yeah.
Um, and it's broad and it's big, and I mean, it's obvious.
They have the, yeah, absolutely.
Parks has just kind of been saved.
No.
I didn't, I wouldn't, I would quantify it as a playground.
That's right, yeah, it, it's an insult, yeah, true swing.
The beach is definitely something we need to discuss.
Mm-hmm.
Because we've discussed it before and it doesn't go anywhere, and that's kind of pointless.
So do you have that playground question mark to, to that one? Playground.
Well, it's part of like the beach use, is that.
Yeah, I think it's inclusive of the thing, yeah.
Would that be in parts of fund expense?
It, it definitely should be, um, and our, is a, a big question in general, um, because they did essentially say you can use it for anything you want to the function of your municipal government, uh, which is quite broad.
So that goes with the beach on.
Or can, uh, impact, what was the, there's another phrase, just but like impact your municipality for recreation.
Yeah, I mean.
Or space.
Like a park to recreation service, or is that what the beach?
That's.
And at first it was not.
That's a beach.
Yeah, there, there, yes.
I'm sorry, yeah.
So, so the way I would capture that is I put down maybe playground. So in the actual statement that I'll write, it says something like investigate the opportunities to, uh, to update and replace the, the, uh,
metal.
The playground.
I think if, if we're gonna have finances with field and we're not gonna have field with, field and finance goes with fairgrounds, then beach, parks and rec and playground needs to also have finance.
Uh, yeah, actually, you know, I had that on most places, and so I will keep that.
Okay.
So, I mean, they're gonna overlap.
Well, we can't discuss those things without there being money involved.
Yeah.
I'm not saying it has to be funded by Reedfield taxpayers alone, but.
We, we. Um, more collaboration, so more collaboration and engagement with schools. Um, is that, uh, either be a goal? Or, go ahead.
But, well, I was saying, it's like a value, could that not be, is that a, is that a goal, is that a, is that a regular goal? Or is it something that we can apply to where we, we are constant, we, we always keep an eye towards trying to have volunteers from the school? I, I sometimes feel like, you know, you, I, I sometimes feel like they're so busy that it's hard for a whole organization to be integrated into something quick, you know, like to have the select board come along and say, hey, we have volunteers, and they're like, well, we, maybe, you know, I, I just, maybe I don't.
So when I, when I hear that, I don't think just of that.
No.
I, I think also that that's a huge piece of property, a lot of facilities, and I, I think I would love to try to think of ways to help the school, you know, to see a way to be more inclusive of, of the community and let the community use those facilities more and be more encouraging about that.
Yes, I agree.
You know, that, one of the, and I let's go way back, you know, when I came to work at that school, I came because it was a record community school, I love the communities in the main. The community is in the main for the reason that the community is welcome there. You know, and that's, that's definitely changed.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
You know.
I, I agree with you a hundred percent, and, and if that, I, I don't mind making it a goal, absolutely, to, to, to sort of reach out and, and do that. I think that could help us immensely.
But we have to be cognizant of the fact that we are not the only community, um, just because they reside within our town boundaries.
That is true.
Anything we're asking of them really has to come from a position of all four communities can come to utilize this space, and that may be more scary to them, actually.
Well, maybe more scary, but sometimes scary things are okay. And I think that, I think that you could probably find pretty easy to do with the other towns as well. Say this is something they would welcome, you know, so maybe it's part of this conversation with the other towns.
Right, absolutely, I agree with that.
I mean, your point is absolute correct, it's not a Reedfield piece of property.
And I think, I think that that was part of the discussion this past year, is that people are still thinking, well, because the elementary school is in Reedfield, then Reedfield has some sort of a right to go there, and no more so than Wayne or Mount Vernon. So I, I, I think it is bigger, I think maybe it is a goal.
Yeah, I, 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 I agree, a hundred percent.
And it kind of ties in with that whole town properties idea.
Yeah.
That the school properties are not town properties, I was one of those who signed them away.
So let me just say this, okay? Some of your goals will be fairly concrete and measurable, and some of them you're gonna need to check in on yourself.
Yeah, 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 I got you.
Okay, so this sounds like one that you're just gonna have to check in on.
Yeah.
And it may be that you think out of the box and that, that maybe you, um, try to have a sit down with, uh, a board designee and the town manager and the superintendent once a quarter, do an update, build relationships or whatever. It may mean that when you do a volunteer appreciation, you find out which teachers live in town, and you include them, because many of them volunteer their time as well as just teach, uh, in, in some of that recognition. So there may be other ways to measure that. The Jesse Lee Church, does that stay on here, or is that something we have to consider in a different light? I don't know.
That in the conference.
Yes.
Can I ask a question, a little clarification?
Sure.
So you have number one, field finances.
Yep.
And then you have it arrowing down to fairgrounds, parks and recs, beach. That number one is kind of a big deal in itself, because what they're looking for is a $700,000 fall field expansion. So it's, it is included with parks and rec, but at the same time, it's a huge individual project that they are wanting to consider and find funding for. So like to lump it in and bury it with fairgrounds, parks and recs may be a little deceiving to the public, because limited access to how they see things and perceive things, um, would make it seem like they're burying it in with beach, parks and recs. But it's a big chunk, a big item, that kind of deserves itself a little thing.
Okay, what do you think, Cory? We just got some feedback, um.
I would put all four of them together, actually, I wouldn't separate them at all.
Other thoughts?
Well, one thing that.
I mean, I, what I will try to do is when I write this, I will try to be as, you know, broad as I can in terms of making sure that I capture what's said here, but.
I mean, one of the things that I would hope would happen is that we don't look at it as automatically as a $700,000 budget.
Right.
Right, I, I think that we should go back to scratch and involve stakeholders and figure out what is gonna get the broadest support, not just about the money, you know, about the whole concept.
Yeah.
And I think we need to pay attention, and I think that there, it wasn't just the money. I don't believe.
Any.
That, do you think it was just the money?
Or a big part of it.
I mean, obviously it was part of, I, I don't think it was just.
Right, but the, the way to do that is what Dennis has proposed, is you take a vote on the concept, and then you find out, if people support this, then you can move forward with something. If they don't support it, you don't need to move forward, it doesn't matter if it's free or if it costs a million dollars, if people don't want it, then we don't want it. And if people do want it, then we figure out how to move it.
So, let's, this really isn't a public hearing, okay? But I did want to include that, you did bring it up, and so I appreciate the feedback, so I've got to get back to work with the board itself. There will be an opportunity at the end for anybody to make a comment on, on what, what they observed here. So, is that okay? Okay, great, so, and, but thank you for helping us reflect on that. So when I capture these in a report that I give to you, that's not the report, that's not the, that's not the goals that you're going to vote on, okay? I would anticipate that it would, would be wordsmithed. And, and then, you know, from that point on, that's what you would vote on.
Unless we hammer it out tonight.
Unless you hammer it all out tonight, but I better doubt we're gonna hammer out the word tonight.
Just, one thing, Bruce, I, I want the board to know that we, we do take these goals very seriously, we make them a part of our actual review and discussion, it's like board meetings. Uh, and one of the most important things that happens with these goals is they are fed directly to the budget committee for priority setting when it comes to looking at spending, um, and, and revenues and all of that. And so I just wanted to have you have at the back of your minds that whatever we're coming up with with these goals is, is, you know, has a direct impact on the budget process, on, in the direction that board and, boards and committees receive all those things, so.
Yeah.
Yeah. And I also think like, I, I, I like the having this process together, because I certainly don't want to like bury anything, and I, I, I want to make sure even having this process open, we see what, what we're, we're dealing with, um, here in terms of that, so. Um, are these our five, are we still building some goals out of this? We're not done building, are we?
We're not, um, so we do have one more question, which was, um, on the Jesse Lee Church, whether that rises to a major goal.
I think that's gonna be crossed off, it'd be the, for as a plan or just like an, just an item on that.
Yeah, I think heard of that, yeah.
Okay.
And so, we've kind of gotten five goals, okay? We've built, um, a number of documents and ordinances and policies to pay attention to, and we've talked and talked about in a more overarching values that we would bear in mind as we try to accomplish all our goals. Does that make sense?
Yeah, so we made the goals and we sort of padded the way we get there with some of those values, is that what you're saying?
So, yeah, so the way I would kind of probably organize this is these are our overall aspirations, and these aspirations are items we are going to pay attention to as we put into effect our goal reaches, if you will, during the course of the year. And then C would be, um, some of the supporting things that need to be done on, on that basis are to look at these ordinances, it's broadband, so on and so forth, using that wording of, um, revise and review governance documents, which allows you to also capture something else that comes up. Because, you know, uh, an earthquake opens up a cemetery or something, you know?
Yeah.
Yeah, so you, you know, you're, you're always nimble, right? For government, you're nimble.
Well, at this level we can be.
Yeah.
At this level, actually, you can be.
It's, it's perfect.
We're not usually, but we can.
Great.
Yeah. So does that sound like a, um, a plan?
Yes.
Okay, so, let's take a look at our schedule, see where we are, and then what we want to, um, we're running ahead of time, which is great.
Only by five minutes, yeah.
Yeah, but it's, it's pretty good. Okay, so we have a consensus goal list, um, how much refining do you want to do tonight?
I, I would like to just get into a little bit more about the in-house plowing.
Okay.
I'd like to know what that goal really means to, not Ralph's ideas, but how we think we can talk about that or dig into that a little.
I'd like to go through kind of what it says, um, on and off, um, at the eight o'clock part, you know, the goal refinement and detailing, so construct our goal list, we've got it there. I think it'd be helpful to rewrite it and then start doing the refinement and the detailing, and how do we get there? Who's gonna be the champion? What do we expect of each other? Who's handling it now?
Yeah.
I think that would be, that, that, I think that's what you're kind of asking, that a little more detail is needed on what those things mean, and that will, you know, will help to, um, what I think Virginia was talking about, too.
So you know, actually, well, as I reflect on this, I added number two to this list because it was just sitting there. Um, so I, I don't believe any board member in our conversations that put that on that list.
You're right, yeah, you're absolutely, I was like, oh, it must have just been a thing, yeah.
Yeah, um, so I just captured it there, I guess, um, to, to put it someplace, so maybe it doesn't belong there.
Well, I'll tell you, because it's not private, when Eric and Dennis and I have been planning meetings, we've had multiple conversations about just that topic.
Mm-hmm.
It came up because of the approaching hundred percent increase in the cost of snowfall.
Well, in the last two years, it's gone way over a hundred percent.
In the two years, it's about a hundred percent, yeah.
Yeah.
Um, and that's concerning, it, you know, if a, if an expense is a thousand dollars, and it doubles to two thousand, that's something we can handle. I know, but when something is $175,000 and now it's $100,000, that's a different magnitude. Um, and so we talked about that quite a bit, and it's, whether, I think we're a different community than we were 10 years ago when we voted out public works. You know, we're not necessarily talking about public works, and I think the big part of the conversation then was that contractors felt that we were taking away their livelihood. Well, now we can't get a contractor. No town can get fine contractors, I mean, this is a big issue, and so.
It used to be like, there are, everyone wanted that job, and now no one wants that job.
Right, I mean, we had to find someone and twist their arm to get more construction to do this. So I think this is just being responsible to look at other options. You know, we did talk to the town of Winthrop, and Eric asked them, and they were like.
We will again.
Nope, can't do that.
We're gonna continue.
So, yeah, right, we, we should list it out.
So, you have a three-year contract, I'm not dating him. So the three-year contract, so Ralph's proposal was basically to.
Let me search.
To, to do a site, yeah.
I, I, and, and is that a goal? Is, would, would a goal be to, you know, we want to make sure this year we do a study or comparison against doing an in-house versus contracted service? Is that a goal?
I don't think it's a goal, I think it's a, a task that you delegate to the town manager on that shortlist of.
Yeah, that, that, what I call the bottom list.
Or maybe to the maintenance department. Where it failed previously was, this is too much detailed.
Well, there was too many things back then, and also winters were different 10 years ago, let's be honest, too, I mean, that was a big part.
Yeah, the amount of ice we have now is horrendous.
There's a lot difference to that job in 10 years.
But I think the major reason it failed was no one kept track of the difference between summer expenses and winter expenses. And so it was all just put together, and so it couldn't be separated out, so nobody could say that it was better or it was worse. And it just became a, a nightmare. So maybe the thing to do is to start keeping track before the season starts of how much was the snowfall? How much, how, you know, how long was the plowing?
Yeah.
And just keep track of all that, because then that gives us the data from which you could do something to figure out what you need in the future.
So then I would just, I, I, I guess we all kind of understand it, I would remove that from the list of goals and have it be what I would call the bottom list of things that, that we sort of organize in, in, prepared for Eric.
Yeah, and it certainly relates to the fiscal responsibility, uh, as mentioned, and, and they, and they may not end up being a value, but it's worth looking at.
Yeah.
How long was our previous contract?
One year.
We have four plus one?
Yeah, and then we did a plus one because we were in a mine.
Okay, so it was just a one year.
Ended up, yeah, I'm still at one year, and that's when we saw an incremental increase of forty or fifty percent roughly. Which is, we saw a major increase there, then we saw another major increase with this new contract, uh, in the four years. And so it's understandable, when we see the price of diesel, which is a fundamental ingredient, go up like, you know, up to a hundred percent increase and then down about eighty, but still, it's.
And wages have gone up, and, you know, to hire people who are willing to go out and do that work at all times of day and night. We understand that there's a cost, but, um, it's worth it to see if, 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 nobody would be doing it if there wasn't profit in it, right? So we know there's profit somewhere, and I guess the, the question is, is it worth doing it ourselves? Is there enough there that it may? Is there enough there that it makes a difference? You know, if it's five thousand dollar savings, then forget it, nevermind if you got.
So we put that, we put that in the delegation group?
Yes, sir, correct.
So we have the field finance finances, okay? And we'll talk, we'll talk about that in terms of also um the parks and um. The the programs that'll go on that, go into that as well.
Now, is that the question? Is that what I was saying in terms?
No, the question, well, yeah, the questions are a part of that too, yes. Um, we have the.
Well, that's right, well, and it says fairground warrant question.
Oh, okay, oh, I'm sorry, yes.
He didn't number it.
I didn't.
We have the sidewalk.
Sorry. Yeah, that's just a carryover from before and we're already doing that, so you feel like it's a goal we're continuing, or at least.
You have the beach and you have the schools relationship, so you have four major goals.
Yes.
I I think we need to break out a little bit.
Okay.
The field finances and parks and recs in terms of just. We don't want to repeat the questions that we asked last year in the public, we don't want to be in that same boat. We want to have something completely different. Um, and I think the parks and rec piece is really about how, no matter if we make any changes. How do we grow what we have? How do we utilize?
Okay.
What's already a rant, so I'll have that as separate.
Yeah.
And goals can have interrelationships, right? There's just no problem with that, yeah. So you've got the field finances, you've got the sidewalk, you've got um the fairground question. Which is gonna be part of the field finances, which is to ask that big question, the big ask, if you will. Um, and then you have um the parks and requisition, the beach and the playground kind of as one. And then you have the relationship with schools as another goal.
Yeah, I like that.
Does everybody hear the same thing?
I hear it, but I'm not sure school relationship rises to the level of the others. I mean, maybe that's okay.
I don't think every goal needs to be.
Weighty.
Yeah, weighty.
Okay.
I mean, it can be, you know, you, for example, you could say, I'm gonna put this in the values statement, okay? Or you could break it up and just say, we wanna give that a little extra special attention because it's really brand new on our radar.
Can you buy that?
Yeah.
I I I I feel that's a good way of putting it, because it is new, it is a kind of newer. You know, goal that that I've always, I I always feel like we 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 like to make sure that we distance ourselves from the budgetary. Like, remember, they're doing their thing, but then, you know, we do only get one meeting a year. It with the with every, and we go through those warrants and it's a huge payment every time.
Seventy-five percent of the tax bill.
Yeah, and and so I I think I wanted to be.
Maybe it needs to be school slash town's relationship. Because la- last year was really pointed, when the entire Reedfield Select Board showed up and no one from the other towns showed up. I think one person from Wayne was online.
At their budget meeting?
Yes.
Yeah.
Nobody else showed up from any other town.
Well, I mean, we've we've always had the best representation in terms of that.
But I mean, I.
It could be, it could be different though.
It it could be different, so I think. As I said, there are four towns that interact in the community and school district and.
Well, and at at rec level, at the rec level, the goal now is that. All rec sports are ran as a ran of rec sports, even though Reedfield has the committee that facilitates a lot of it, but. All all youth level of the rec programs are all the towns coming together. And then they're all intermingled in their signups and they're all based here, and so.
So Mount Vernon, Wayne.
Whether it's soccer, basketball, baseball, softball, your your kid could be playing on a team with kid from Manchester or Wayne or whatever. So they're all in Reedfield, we're all using or trying to use facilities in Reedfield, because it's central. At the at the middle school, high school.
So there's no more like Mount Vernon soccer and Wayne soccer and Reedfield soccer.
So let me, let me just reflect and restate something here because I wanna make sure. I understand something because you're going in a little bit of a different direction than what I understood.
Yeah.
On the schools, you're talking about Reedfield's relationship on a broad level with the schools, not specifically just about recreation. But about volunteerism, uh, about perhaps event coordination.
Yeah.
Um, you know, I mean, it could be as mundane as we, you know, make sure our fire department works well with the Mariana schools, which they do. Uh, on evacuation.
Do you remember, Bruce, there was a time I tried, I I thought it would be really, because we do the pledge of allegiance every, every meeting. I wanted to contact uh the schools and see if we could have a a school-aged child. Who the teachers felt like, you know, deserved a little special recognition to come to our meetings. And lead us in the the pledge as kind of like a an added. A award recognition, especially now that it's it's broadcast. And I, it was, it was like crickets, like nothing. Now, they might have not known, like, who is this joker from the select board? Uh, but but, you know, those are sorts of things and I I would love to try to do that again because I think it's an interesting um recognition and. Especially young people into this process. Um, I I think is really important and and I like, that's one of the things why I like to have the um. There's the sports teams come in, they win the state championship or they have a special recognition or something like that. I I I think it's such a cool thing to know that that the the people over here and that they have these little meetings at the town hall. Recognize the work that goes on all levels.
Yeah.
I I like that.
I think one really, I mean, it's it's, there's obviously areas we can improve, but the the one of the bright spots. That I think we might overlook sometimes is the relationship we have with the school, on the school board, with our school board representatives, I think our our. Um, RSU um, uh, elected folks that that represent town of Reed, they'll do a fantastic job. Um, and that might be an avenue to start, trying to trying to build some more of this relationship, but um I think that that um. That's been, that's been a really good uh area, a very positive area of communication and um. So I just wanted to point that out because it's easy to say that things are are not great, um, when I think that we have some things that are, you know, but but we could do better. And I think that relationship, I think maybe that using our board representatives, RSU thirty-eight board representatives and our town people. Is a good bridge, but when they're there, they're focused on.
Their agenda.
Board long enough, that you're focused on the agenda that you're at at that point for the school, not for how do we keep building these other relation. And I think it's just a different chat, different bit of different flavor.
Yeah.
Yeah. Just kind of like what Steve was saying, to respect community fees and just bringing it all back.
And the school board does a good job of having students come and they do have the teens come.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Just have wonderful recognition also.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't know.
I like that.
They do have opportunities for that.
Has everyone felt that they've been heard in terms of what they wanted to contribute? Okay. Um, great, so there's a little bit more process that we can go through. We can do two things if we want to, okay? We can take these and number them in some order if you want, or we can just leave them as is, saying that all goals. You know, basically have equal wa- weight um to some degree. And that they're just up there in order that we came up with them.
Yeah, I would, I would vote for that, I don't wanna prioritize them in any way because then it's like, well, this is a goal.
So in other words, I will have a bold list.
Good.
It will not be a number list.
Yeah.
Which indicates um weight.
Yeah, a priority, which I don't think.
Okay, so the second thing is, we could write a sentence or two about each one. Or you could delegate me to write a mundane pedestrian sentence that you then wordsmith into. The actual goal that you want.
Can we do that?
In other words.
Yeah, I hate the mundane.
Let's, let's just do it. So for this particular piece, I'm gonna be the secretary. And I'm going to, I'm not gonna put it on the chart, I'm gonna check against the tape when I actually write it. But I'm gonna go ahead and take down your basic information as we try to to get into that. And I think probably the best way to do this is the person sort of brought this to us. Uh, or might wanna champion it, would actually speak to how they would like to see it work, does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay, so let's start with the fields and finance. Who would like to address that?
Can I just ask ahead of time, do they really go together, Sean, or is the field an issue?
I didn't bring this one, I just.
No, he did not bring it, came from the, it came in.
Carryover.
Yep, it came through a carryover, it was asked, we refocused again by the public. And I know Sean's had a lot to do with it, so.
Yeah.
I'm picking on him importantly. So I guess anybody could kick in on this, right, Sean?
Yeah.
Do you like help?
Yeah, I think, I I I'm looking at your arrows too and trying, I think really the field and finance is all about um. Like you were saying, Dennis.
We wanna do the.
We want, when the town, we want to research and plan something that the town needs to watch. With with input from.
As many as possible.
Everybody, you know, committees, commissions.
Yeah, and and I think if you have a clear mandate, like, that's why I I I almost say that the that. Number one and the fairgrounds question are in fact the same, I think, in in this, in this instance. Because I think number one harkens back to a time where we did have a preconceived notion of a plan and things like that. And we are kind of wiping that clean and saying, you know, with the question, it it the voters are either gonna say yes or no. And then from there, then you have your direction to say, clearly this has been voted on, now let's move. To towards getting these folks involved, let's have our walkthroughs, let's do our gardens and things of that nature. Um, I just feel like it's a.
Let me ask you this.
Yeah.
When you ask this question, okay, are you considering that when you ask it, you're providing some information? This is a recommendation board or or, cause you usually do recommend a yes or no vote, although. On a question, usually usually those aren't financial issues, I believe.
Yeah, I think that even if you have a question that that um says something grant funded, that's probably a financial. I mean, the the budget committee um only comments on financial, the select board comments on on everything.
Right, so it's it's, what I guess what I'm asking is, you have some homework to do to prepare that question. And to give the public information before they vote on.
Absolutely agree, and I think that that it's clear, I think this, the the the, it's clear what the asks are. To have an outdoor basketball area and to have a softball field. Um, and and if that has to happen in phases, if we need to add, you know, there there are so many questions that we wanna ask about those things. But none of those questions will matter if it doesn't have the support of the town. And then you eliminate anyone who thinks that there's some grand scheme, because then it's like, okay, well, if the people voted no, then we'll just move right along.
So so when you talk about that question, you say it, right? What is it?
I think that it is the development of a recreational place in the fairgrounds, that's what it is.
Which may include.
Right, which may include, I mean, I think they know, right, we, like you said, we have homework, but we know that an outdoor basketball facility, we know that uh having a. Softball field is part of the things that we feel like, you know, we would wanna be able to include.
So, yeah, so the question's gonna be worded, it's like, and again, I'm reflecting. And I'm trying to hearken back to when you started uh with this in your big idea.
Yeah.
So the question is gonna be worded in a way that is non-financial, so you're getting the feedback to say, we should pursue.
Yes.
Financing.
Exactly, right.
Not pursue.
Do you, uh, this is what, cause I, you know, I don't, I don't write questions all the time, but it basically just said that you support the development of recreational facilities. At the fairgrounds complex that do not utilize town funds.
I I think, are we gonna be spec- specific on what recreation? On what recreational use we're asking.
Well, I I wondered, I I wondered about that, that was a.
Like, do you want this if it doesn't have?
But I I I I feel like, you know, when you start to, you know, recreational facilities is is broad enough. But then I feel like if you start to, you know, if you wanna be more specific. That's where you can get lost in the weeds on a question like that, like, well, the question was only for this, this and this. Um, it, what I've noticed in my experience with ballot questions is, you know, it's very specific to, if this is what people voted on. This is what has to go in. Um, recreational facilities could be anything from. A horse sheet pit as well, uh, to to something like a volleyball court or something like that to to the the things. And well, that's a whole, I mean, I believe in archery, but uh, the idea is that if you keep it broad enough, there's, please. But that's, that's how I would look at it, is keep it broad enough that that then we could say, the people want something there. So what would be the best fit there? What could we do that would make the most sense?
Yeah, so you you actually end up with two questions, okay, so the first question is what Dennis is proposing gets on the ballot. Then, once, if that's a no, you're done. But if it's a yes, then you have to develop a question that would go on a further ballot. That would say, here's how we're gonna accept these grant monies or whatever, or the town's gonna do this. And that becomes the financial vote up and down, so you're really in a two-year project.
Yeah.
And the key in developing that second question is involving all the stakeholders from the beginning of developing.
Yes.
That's the key. Yeah, continue with that, I think, I think there was a lot of innovation, it just didn't happen in a way that was as constructive as it could have been.
Yeah, we can do better, and we will.
I think however we phrase this, you have to insert that you, we need to have the assessment of all the town properties. Prior to this being considered, because that was a major statement point with the most vocal people. Well, you could have put it here, you should have put it there. And that has to be already considered before we put this question out, and that's why we need this inventory and checklist. And then I really support what you're doing, Dennis, but I just wanna warn you, um. We did this with broadband and we had an amazing turnout and we had amazing support. Everybody wanted us to investigate broadband, everybody was behind, yep, we wanna do that. And then that's not how it turned out, we spent a lot of money working towards that because people said, yep, this is what we want. And then when it came time, there were all sorts of other parties that came out of the woodwork and it got killed. So. You can do this, but that doesn't necessarily mean you're ever gonna get approval.
Absolutely, but I think it's, I I think it's essential, just like in the broadband, to have, to have that clear direction. And and say, this is what we want to do. And then it's up to, I think the onus falls on the people who support the project to to put a proposal forward that is good enough. And 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 then make it so that it's, it's a no-brainer, that's the way I think.
Okay, so I don't have a lot of wording on this.
No.
But I have a lot of reflection around the realm, I think I can probably write this up, does that work for those?
Yeah, absolutely.
What's wrong with the way Dennis?
Oh, I have that, I have the wording of Dennis's question.
Yeah.
So I have that.
Right.
But we also have to. Kind of describe what we're doing.
Yeah, yeah, I wouldn't, I wouldn't.
Can you verbalize what you're thinking? I mean, we're discussing it here, but I'm not sure what you're going to write later.
So the, well, you would see what I was writing later, all I'm writing is a report for you, I'm not writing.
Okay.
A something that you're gonna take and floor or anything like that. So I'm just going to basically be writing on field and finances of the field. That we will ask a question on the June ballot, and the question will be, quote, Dennis's question. Um, and I'll close quotes and I'll probably make an observation that that question might be refined. It's to give the town direction uh for further investigation of what it's going to do. Um, with field, with finances and fields down in that area.
You're gonna put three or four things on there, three or four items together?
Um, I'm, I'm just kind of putting one, I think, but.
Okay, that that sounds more reasonable.
Yeah.
Yeah, you cram it with five or six things on there.
Mm-hmm.
I want this bread, I mean, whatever that band is, I want that, but I don't want a beach and I don't want this.
Oh, I got you, I see what you're saying, yeah, no, 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 it'll be a separate thing.
But let me say, let me, let me say this too, okay?
Yeah.
So this is a select board goal, this is not a public warrant question. I mean, you may, you may be discussing this and involving it through three or four different board meetings.
Yeah.
As your year progresses.
Right, it's just something that we, that this.
It's what you're gonna work on.
We're actively pursuing, yeah, gives us direction, okay, good.
And then, you know, you'll measure against that.
Yeah.
And and part of your measurement could be, well, we changed direction a little bit in February because we found this feedback.
Right, exactly right.
Okay, great, so.
Oh.
Next one is the sidewalk, is that correct?
Well, that's the, it's just a carryover from before, right?
That's a carryover.
Yeah. We know, we know there's something happening, we just, we just literally approved the design firm. Uh, to do all of that, and that's, that's.
They're gonna carry the process out.
Yeah.
And I wanna please add, um, the input or.
Yes.
Surge of the property owners affected.
Yeah.
That's the proposal already.
Yeah, yeah, we know there's a, that's good.
Okay.
Yeah, so that's, that's, that's fine, sidewalk's good.
Carrying forward that one.
Absolutely. And then four is the beach.
Is the beach.
Is the beach enhanced beaches.
Yeah, and that was just kind of a capture.
Yeah, sort of like that.
Yeah.
It's the grand plan for the beach, right?
Yeah, it's just, it's really just uh enhancing the use of the space, current space.
And then, and it's um. Um, an extension of some additional services.
Yeah, and opportunities for revenue um for the beach, and.
Something like capital improvements.
I mean, I think capital improvements would be fantastic, but I also think that's a bit further out than this year, but I do think. Uh, there are many things we can do quickly, you know, programming, party of volunteers too, get volunteers to support their. Activities.
Is it already in the capital plan or?
Portions of it are, um, uh, we have some, I think, we've got money to actually help develop a master plan facility. Which I think is really important, a lot of the things that people are talking about, playground equipment, um, uh, some kind of a shelter. Uh, getting a proper restroom, maybe person wearing water, all those things being part of a, a, a plan for the facility, much like what we. Had started with for the fairgrounds, but hopefully a little bit different.
But but in terms of, like, if we're doing goal language, we could just say investigate uh fair, uh, you know, beach. Improvements, right, could it be that simple, and then, and then some of that is included under there, like what what Sean's specific ideas were.
Well, just like opportunities for revenue that are also just an asset to have in the beach.
We talked about programming, docs, shelter, playground.
Yeah, and when I say, you would, I'm talking about like fries and shit.
No, you've said.
Yeah. Spinning machine stuff.
Yeah, if you had any, if you had, yeah. Cold drinks and an ice cream.
And a corner.
What'd you do?
Sorry. Okay, um, without words, middle guys basically have the beach enhanced use of space. An extension of the services of the beach and activities, oppo- opportunities, excuse me. Um, regarding programming and investigating beach improvements. And I can probably capture a little bit more of that.
Oh, you're gonna smooth that right out and make it into a.
And the playground was specific things like doc, like a.
I don't think we discussed those specific things, those are our conversations with the board, right?
Yeah, exactly, yeah, yes, yes, yes.
I think, you know, anybody ever sees it ran or, or not, could not talk about those.
Yeah, agreed.
Agreed, and so number four is the schools relationship?
Yeah.
So we skipped over the parks and rec?
I thought that was part of the enhanced features.
Yeah, that's.
Oh, is it a separate one?
Well, I don't.
Okay, so the parks and recs, that was the carryover of, that was the programming issue, is that still something we really wanna carry over? Like having a parks and rec director and.
Talk about that.
Where are we at with our parts?
Yeah, um, I can, I can tell you, I can't right now, but we have, what we have available, but we still have more than half of our allocation. Available, um, it was originally allocated for broadband, um, the full amount, uh, under the last county warrant that was rejected. So we have all those funds available for use and allocation. Um, the board is gonna have to consider how to use those, whether you wanna use it for. Um, helping with construction of something at the fairgrounds, or for planning work at the beach, or for a rec position. Um, I think scheduling wise, it makes sense perhaps, um, to maybe have more uh facilities and infrastructure in place before you try to add program. But that's just my feeling on it, I mean, um.
Yeah, I guess it depends on the program you're talking about running, like, so I mean, I'm talking, I guess what I think about, I think about using all the equipment we have for air states. Why can't that get pulled out?
Oh, yeah, so that I wouldn't be like a full rec, rec position.
Yeah.
Um, I think it's also challenging too, if we're trying to, using um the argument about um not using uh one-time funds to, to start funding a position.
Yeah.
Um, that could be a challenge uh a year, two, three. And I think that if we're gonna be doing that position, which I think we should, long-term, I don't know when, but we should, we need to. Um, that should be a straight up, this is what it's gonna cost, this is what it's gonna be, this is what the scope is. Uh, and people should vote on that as a, as a straight item. Um, and we can talk about revenues and the fact that if you have a really good rec program, they can pay for it itself.
Well, I think that position to me is, is the person that goes to the conservation of trails, the rec committee meetings. The person that pulls these all together, the person that monitors those different grant opportunities, you know, there's, it's a really big. It's a real big position, but it's something that, like you said, it can generate a lot of revenue for town and infrastructure.
And value to the community.
And value to the community.
Well, it provides a service for. The numbers that we've put forth it, in some of the discussions, and the kids who play softball, basketball, the phenomenal numbers.
Two hundred and sixty kids doing soccer.
Two hundred and sixty kids doing soccer.
And we've got volunteer coaches managing all that, and Teresa running all finances, which we're gonna have to figure something out, the, the. How that all comes together, because it is a major consolidation of services under the town review. Um, as far as um five towns now are in their programs essentially through our town office, which we need to think about that, but.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It's, there's value, but it also hasn't.
So rather than having a, a position. Why don't we just consider, and this isn't a large amount, but why don't we just consider having a stipend for the committee chair of. The rep for, is that the person who runs all of this now?
Right, it's a job, really.
Right, but I mean, they're already doing it, and they're not getting paid anything. So shouldn't we, we have other stipended positions in town, it's something we could consider.
I think it's different than just the rec chair getting a stipend, I really do think it's a different position, it could be a different stipend position.
I think you're right, Sean.
But I don't think anybody in the current role, obviously they don't appreciate that, but I don't know how that solves the overarching problem.
So I'm gonna keep number, I'm gonna keep that parks and rec is as a separate goal, and it's really the carryover goal.
Yeah.
And I, and I, but I'll look at it as something that, you know, this breaks a little bit better. Or refine what parts of it going forward we need to do, I'll capture that from this conversation.
So this is a position we're talking about.
We were talking about a position to develop and support program, this is what you read, read it last year, wrote it last year, excuse me. Create the fund of parks and recreation position to develop and support programs and events at the beach slash fairgrounds using our program.
I think it's too early for that, and I, I don't like the idea of funding something that we can't sustain.
Yeah.
I think it should be something we can point at and say, that's where our art, that everybody can enjoy.
I'd like.
I think we can take the art part out of this conversation.
So take that right out.
Yeah, yeah, take art.
Just take that off, that's the, that's the update, that allows you to continue to investigate.
Yeah.
And it may tell you that it's going to be um a part-time position started with, or whatever, you know.
Yeah, but there has to be something, I have even mentioned it in the comprehensive plan committee. Meeting is, is as a part of our goal over the next ten years is to have this integrated in it as well. Um, because it's, it's, it's going to have to be, it's the way the town is growing, the way our resources, the lands we have. Um, so that's, that's a conversation we're all having.
Okay, so then the final one is uh the schools, and I think we already talked about that.
Yeah.
Or maybe just something I need to add.
Supporting that, and I'm already thinking of ways that that we could do that, so. I I like that goal, I think that's.
Something along the line of like, improve collaboration, the vision of cooperation between the schools.
So I have choppy words that I can.
Good.
Put some verbs with and.
Yeah, predicates, subjects, right?
And you were down with Steve just said.
What's that?
Cooperation, collaboration, and.
There was another C.
There's some communication with the town, I was listening.
I think that's great, I think that's a good point.
And so was Karen. It was the three Cs, I forgot, it's true.
Yeah, I, I literate.
Great, um, shall we move on?
Yes.
Okay, so now we're gonna talk about some commitments, and those commitments can be, you know, a certain board member or two. Are going to kind of shepherd one of these goals. Um, and I'm gonna start with, with a statement that the values statement, which is the broader process of voice. The fiscal restraint, um, and the, the volunteers, um. That's everybody's job, right?
I think you ought to, okay.
Well, those being asked, it will be.
I'm starting with, I think.
Yeah.
I think you also especially note that the chair and vice chair need to stay on top of that in their weekly meetings or five week meetings.
Yeah, that's gonna be something we, we always take a look at.
So if if we keep that at the forefront and it comes to each board meeting, then we'll actually do something about it, right?
Agreed.
Okay, so I will be moving.
So Eric, go just put that on our list that comes back every week.
Standing, standing.
Standing.
Yeah, that's always.
That's it.
Okay, so. We have, um, we have, uh, the goal, which would be the next item. So do we wanna talk about who's going to kind of shepherd or, or look over each of these goals? And some of them might be everybody, but um it's also dangerous not to have a name next to somewhere.
Can you just read us the, the, like, one or two-word title of each one of them?
Sure, fields and finances, okay, which involves that warrant questions. The sidewalk, which is a carryover goal, the beach enhanced use of space, et cetera. Um, the parks and rec, which is a carryover goal, but has been amended to take out the ARP funds. And then the schools relationship, cooperation, collaboration, partnership.
Um, I would volunteer to be a part of the field and finances, the question obviously, it's something if it's, if. If I'm helping bring it, I better put myself out there to answer questions about it.
Okay.
That includes the fairground question, right?
Correct.
Yep, is there anybody else that would wanna work with Dennis on that?
Steve.
Steve, thank you. Um, the sidewalk, um, is, is that a committee of the whole thing, it's already deep into the budgetary process, or is?
I don't.
I think, I don't think that's ever carried a champion, so it's.
Right, but it might be nice to have a select board rep, you know, i- if, be involved in.
Or I can, I keep warning you.
I wrote all about it for a year and just here.
Yeah, whatever you all decide, yeah, why don't talk.
You could have, we could have more than one.
Catherine, Carol will work on that.
Catherine and Carol, the hard case. Well, that's right, okay.
I'm sure you'll communicate accordingly.
The beach enhanced use of space?
I'd like that.
Anybody else wanna partner, anybody else wanna partner with Sean on that?
Uh, you know what, I, I think it'd be appropriate to, to be a part of that, just, I could be, I'll be the, like, number two.
Okay.
Number two.
Number two.
Uh, parks and rec, which is that carryover goal, which has been refined a bit.
Everybody look at Sean.
Yeah, Sean, it's nothing, it's nothing. Yeah.
And that's schools relationship. You got stuck with that, huh?
Yeah, and I would also, I would, if that's okay, if I could be sort of a, a number two there as well, just because I think it would be nice. No, I'll be number three, yeah, that's right.
It's, it's fine to have a group of three, you know, looking at it.
I just wanna be able to, you know, as the, as the chairman, reach out to people and say, hey, listen.
So is Sean solo on that parks and rec carryover?
Yeah.
Okay, you just, you comfortable with that, Sean?
I guess, yeah.
Okay.
Eric will just have to put up with it.
I'll have to, that's right, you're tiny, that's good.
And then on Eric's list, can we go down through that and see if there's anyone who wants to pick out?
Sure, so on Eric's list, and how's it going?
I'll have to.
I think we should all open that, cuz data gathering is gonna be important, and I think we should volunteer, like, every snowstorm is different.
We haven't put that, we haven't read that.
So we can, like, time exactly when it's.
What did you just say the first one last?
And.
It's the only one. And I was. To investigate or.
It's a way more fun than.
Oh, yeah, you're absolutely right, yeah.
So the other place that we could assign names, or we could not assign names.
Yeah.
Are the, um, other documents. So we have, we have on that list.
Yeah.
Seven items.
Yeah.
Um, whether you wanna have somebody champion those, or slide one over to the town manager, or whatever, let's go through.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So there's cannabis broadband, beach parking, um, the select board document. Negotiating the contract, um, warnings, and town property in return.
So I would volunteer for the cannabis, and, uh, all of the cannabis, uh, not, I would volunteer for the can, for the cannabis, uh, thing. And I would also volunteer for, what was the other, it was like, speaking of that, now the third, there was another list there.
Beach parking?
Beach parking, yes, cuz I brought that up.
I'd like to work on the, the procedures, on the town properties. Well, you took the other one.
Yeah, you're fine, yeah, you're good, you're good, yeah, you're, you're.
Well, you know, I mean, some of these are kind of committee of the whole.
Yeah, right, yeah, right.
You know, I have various feelings about meetings of the whole, but some things fall into that, so. So what, what hasn't been spoken for is broadband, so that would be, everybody would just pay attention to that.
And warnings, same way, I feel.
Warnings, and the contract, I'm assuming you will decide.
Yeah.
Who your negotiators are, and they will contact you and all that good stuff.
Yeah.
So.
When do we have to start that, Eric? That must be soon.
Uh, it's soon, the union representative a couple of weeks ago told me that we were gonna have a big increase, and I said, yeah, I know. So, yeah, tell me something. Thanks, thanks, uh, that I can be.
Is your contract tied to the CPI?
Um, it's not, um, and, uh, but they've, they've been, oh.
Okay, thank you, um.
That's all I needed yesterday.
Right there, because I love to talk about it.
We're good.
To finish?
No, 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 I'm just saying, like, we are.
We're good, move on.
Yeah, move on, that's what I meant, yeah, 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 sorry.
So, so we have some champions and a doctors.
Yeah.
Um, does anybody wanna say anything about expectations they have of each other on this?
Of what?
Expectations you might have of each other on any of these goals?
Yeah.
Okay.
I just wanna say, I think it's important for the select board to make sure that, when we talk at the agenda setting meetings, that we think about these and say, hey, who can we, we bring in, what's next? And make sure that the chair and vice chair are helping to lead this, um, process of bringing these things back to the select board for consideration on a yearly basis. I'll do my, what I can, but it really shouldn't come from, from, from the chair and vice chair. Um, people are doing work on these things, having periodic updates, always helpful, so, yeah, could just, um, keep, keep, keep the. Keep these ideas alive in the board constitution.
I guess to that end, that each of us has to do something to keep what we just said we were championing. So that we can have report outs at meetings. I mean, it doesn't have to be every meeting, every person, every goal.
Absolutely, yeah, yeah.
But it can't just be in May, oh, wait a minute, we didn't do any of this, so everybody report out tonight.
Right.
Right, that would be really not helpful.
So do we feel we're all headed in the same direction, that doesn't mean we agree on every single goal to the exact same degree of enthusiasm.
Yeah.
But we see this as a refined reflection of what everybody has contributed.
Yeah.
So, I'm gonna ask everybody that, Steve, do you feel that way?
Yeah.
Generally, it can be general, Cass? Dennis?
Yes, sir.
Sean?
Yep.
Carol? Good, okay. And then I did have another sentence in parentheses there, if not, how do we resolve or respectfully accept that, so you will have. So you will have places where you differ on pushing a goal forward. So you'll have to figure out how to, to deal with that. And sometimes it just comes down to a vote and somebody's has a different piece of opinion. But I think if we go back to our listening exercise, um if the person is at least listened to, um you know, we've given, we've given that, we've given it due consideration, so I would ask everybody to kind of respect that. So I do wanna, anybody else in the board have anything to say? I do wanna circle back to the public and ask the public if they have like a couple minutes comment on the work that they observed here tonight. Um, and um, and just kind of wrap up after that. Any members of the public want to say anything?
No.
Yep, go ahead. You just stand up.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, no, we're.
Yeah, you gotta get the owl, so.
You gotta get the owl there, dude.
Oh, thank you. Uh, stand up or?
No, no, it's the whole thing.
Yeah, come on up there, yeah, it's, it's hidden behind those giant pieces of paper. Yeah, now the owl can see you and we all.
I don't wanna take too much time, but I appreciate you giving that opportunity to the public to, for getting any concerns at the beginning of the meeting and then having an opportunity to circle around and give our voice of what's going on here. And this one, the first thing I wanna say is, uh, everyone in this room, I just really wanna thank you for, like a lot of the, tell some people here, and people willing to work hard on behalf of our town. So I don't want to demean any of that work, but uh this seems like as a layperson and you know, so common citizen here. Just from my perspective, sitting in the audience, so it seems like we are talking about goals that are kind of people's. And some of this, like a lot of this has to be done in the town, but some of it seems like it's more of a pet project or a pet idea of the typical board members. And one of the ones, the ideas I was thinking of is like, but before we have a meeting like this, do you solicit, you know, ideas from the townsfolk or what they think would be a goal or? I, is there a process to that or I'm just gonna ask if I wasn't aware of it or?
Yeah, there, uh, there is a, there's a public input uh link on the workshop site and then we actually got a few of those, people had emailed us about um, some of the stuff for the, the, the evening, so those are always, we always try to solicit folks to, to be a part of this and say, hey, this is something we'd like to do, so. We try to do that.
All right. Just, I think, I think what we discussed tonight, like having an input from the public that we are, could you identify that they brought up like, you know, or ideas that you still support or actually on here or?
Yeah, the, uh, the, there was talk about in-house plowing, the in-house uh snow plowing, but we sort of put that in something that Eric is going to look at um in terms of that. Um, and then we also uh heard about the, um, we got, all got a letter about the fairgrounds at the, um, excuse me, the, the, the question, uh, you know, about doing that, that was, there was some input there about how we should proceed with that, so that was also one of this as well.
School.
Yeah, school relationship.
Yeah.
Just for what I've done, I'm trying to educate myself, I've gone on several walks with various constituents about several of these issues.
Well, thank you, I appreciate it. I didn't know if.
No, great, great question.
Oh, no, no, I got you, I got you, yeah.
I know, some of the stuff is like near, near to some of your heart, too, and I actually, I actually agree with why too, because if money was no option, I think all these are great ideas.
Right, right.
It's like, hey, it's all, but it seemed like, you know, the, we're about to some good points too, where you talk to some of the constituents and we have some who are elderly, uh, population that are just trying to figure out their ability themselves or leave their homes this winter, so, uh, I think we're getting down to the point of needs and wants and I think you discussed that around the table this evening too, this, you know, things that we'd love to have, but we need to do it this year or, you know, things we definitely need to do this year because, you know, the town might be able to run above it, so we talked about plowing, certain things that just need to be done. Those are things that we wanna have done, but it'd be really nice if we had the budget for it, but again, appreciate this opportunity for letting the public to be independent.
And Joel, I just want you to know that we have had a conversation recently about how hard this winter, how hard we think a lot it's gonna be. But some of those things are state statutes that stop us from changing what we can do with those limits, so that's, that's really a tough one for us too, that we had, it was our last meeting.
Yeah, general assistance.
General assistance rules and how we can, what we could do for that, but we're really held by, you know, state statutes, so statute.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Appreciate your time, thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Any other members of the public? Nobody online?
Nobody online. Virginia was online, whoa, she was also.
She's everywhere. She's in the matrix.
My, 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 my final question.
I was trying to see what I looked like on it.
Oh, I was gonna say, it's something that drops a bunch with me, it's like, but being here is not enough.
I did it in our operation.
Well, I got you.
I didn't have that so much better.
I did not have a good dressing face.
All right, oh, good. Bruce, that's all.
Great, uh, well, you know, actually, ano- another bit of feedback is obviously you all went for election too. So, you know, that hopefully you articulate what you're running on and so forth. Um, but in any case, so when do you want my report? That's what I'm asking.
Before our next meeting.
When is your next meeting?
Well, I'm glad you asked that.
When is?
The what? October seventeen?
October seventeen.
So when would that report need to get to you to be?
Preferred twelve.
Preferred twelve.
Is that the Wednesday?
Yeah, the Wednesday before.
Is that to go into the packet? Or do you want me to provide it before then so you can give it to select board members in advance?
To the board, but I think that in the packet on Wednesday would give them plenty of time. I could email it out and then also include it in the packet.
So I will have a report to you by October twelve.
Is that reasonable?
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
Okay.
I mean, I could do it in a shorter period of time if you want.
No, 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 the twelfth is perfect.
Okay, great. Uh, so I, I would say, okay, um, if there was an observation um in that report that's inaccurate or whatever. Um, that's completely on me and I apologize in advance uh for that. So you will have refinement work to do on whatever, you know, goals that you decide to uh pursue. Um, and I assume you'll formally adopt them by vote. Um, and during the course of the year, you might add a goal or subtract a goal depending on one thing. So, uh, with that, um, I can let you go ahead and adjourn the meeting unless there's anything else you wanna.
I just wanted to remind, I just remind, whoever, I did my last budget tonight, so whoever starts October, you're up.
Who is October? Do we have our next?
It was, we, it's predetermined, but I'm just making sure you all know I'm done.
Is it you, Steve?
If it is, we're all sitting down, but, um, I'll, I'll check with Teresa.
You let us know, okay.
I can help, I can help, but I just, from their responsibility has moved.
Yes, I have completed my responsibility.
Bruce, can you send that to Eric in a format that he can edit?
Oh, yeah.
Thank you.
You wanna?
Uh, so not a PDF.
You don't want my log PDF, my secret password? Okay.
You have what? For the next day, is it cheers day, is it still?
Um, the seventeen is the chairs meeting, yeah. It's chairs and select.
Does that give us a lot of time to do our research or is that like?
Oh, yeah.
We're like an hour and an hour.
Yeah.
That's what we're doing, splitting.
Okay.
Um, I would entertain a motion with her.
I second that.
All in favor? Very well, thank you ladies. We are adjourned. I know, I just like, I just like that, I feel like.
Or recycle or whatever.